Good evening, how's everyone this evening? Being at 7 o'clock on July 11th. May I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved. Second?
Second by Mrs. Danyani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any Watkins? Hi, yep.
Hi.
Just your name and address?
Yep, Jennifer Kuhn, and it's 20 Kerry Litchfield Lane. And I actually have some papers for the board. And I also wanted to hand some out so people can see what I'm drafting about. So, should I bring them up or just?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't know what I was doing. So, yeah. And, who's interested? And, great. So, there'll be copies too, if anybody needs copies. So, I'm here today, for the third time, to ask the Board of Selectmen for some help with the enforcement, to ask some help for some enforcement of the planning board conditions, which are in violation of the construction of the three-unit main building and two-unit carriage house at 9397 First Parish Road. I would hope that the Board of Selectmen would avoid any legal fees on the town residents and use their authority to fix the issues. I filed an appeal with the building enforcement officer, and his response that he did not see any violations. So, I've listed all the violations, we can go over them, but I know you have a long meeting, so I didn't want to take up too much of the time. Basically, in the picture part, this actually is probably one of the most important of the violations, is that the drawings that were approved at the planning board, and also the zoning, they're attached, so I'm like, so nervous. So, they were approved for the plan, and it says A 201, 202, 203, and 301. So, on A 201, you can specifically see the dormers on the front building and the back building, that the dormers are actually designed to go into the roof, below the roof ridge. This had been through Design Review Committee, excuse me, the DRC Design Review Committee, went to zoning a couple times, special permit, and there's a presentation of the engineer presenting, presenting the, so that would be number three, I started numbering them. So, this is number three, the engineer presenting the drawings. Very small house on a big foam core, foam board. Those drawings were supposed to be kept with zoning, they're not with zoning.
Excuse me, Mrs. Kuhn?
And they've disappeared.
So, you can address the board, they can all hear you.
Okay. So, basically, the building is being constructed, not to what was designed, not to what was approved, not was approved for the special permit. I've been here three times, I've been to zoning, I've been to planning, I've been to building, nothing's being done. I don't have the money, $150,000 is what I was quoted, to have a lawsuit, because the building enforcement officer doesn't see the discrepancies in the building. This is happening all over town, okay? I've listed the minutes of the comments of the different boards, this never would have been built, it's way too big for the site. I'm not protesting, or I'm not disagreeing with the decision of the zoning board. They can have their special permit, but they need to build the structures to what was approved. And so, that's why I'm here.
Okay. So, a couple of things I know, because you've been copying me and a lot of your correspondence.
Yes.
Thank you. And I believe that there is a proper zoning appeal process, that you had an opportunity to take part in.
Correct.
And missed that deadline.
Correct.
Correct. So, it's my understanding that, at that point, that, and that you also have received several answers from Mr. Vogel with regards to the areas of which you feel that there were violations, and he has answered you, I think quite extensively, for the past couple weeks.
I would disagree.
And has also noted the one area where a response was required.
Correct.
So, as far as enforcement, I mean, again, it goes with Mr. Vogel and the police and the planning board, you know, we certainly can take a look into it, but I think they've looked quite a bit into it, Mrs. Kuhn, and I think, at some point, it just may be a point where they have to agree to disagree.
Right. I'm not appealing the decision. I think that the enforcement officer needs to respect and honor what zoning board has approved, what planning board has approved. They have spent hours and hours and hours working on that project, and now the developer has just gone and built whatever he wants. These plans that are on file are not what is being built. I mean, do you see a difference in the dormers? Okay? The doors and the windows on the front elevation have all been moved. Okay? He's basically added a third floor. There's no basement, there's a crawl space, there's supposed to be attic. It looks like a third floor. The third floor is just as high as the second floor.
So, I think, you know, again, I think Mr. Vogel spent a lot of time looking into it. Do you want to look at that, John?
Yes, please.
And you've received a lot of answers with regards to that, so it really falls right there with zoning and planning.
Okay.
And not the board. The police department's really the only that falls under us with Mr. Vogel, and I think they've given you all the answers.
Okay. So, they have been to the site, and they say that they cannot stop the construction when they're working on weekends or holidays. They said they can't stop that. They said they can't stop them from parking in the road. They're not supposed to park on First Parish Road. The police said they don't find it to be an obstruction, people can get by fine, trucks and stuff are going around, but it's in here that they're not supposed to park on the road. So, the police are not even enforcing. What do I, I mean, if the building enforcement officer cannot enforce these, then what, I mean, what do we do? I have to go and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to have a lawsuit because he can't see the difference in dormers and roof ridges? I want some answers to my questions. Okay?
Maybe after the first or second time you came in. Maybe after the first or second time you came in, I went to the building department. And I can't, cannot remember exactly, but you had concerns about height, setback.
Right. Not setback.
Okay. Well, he did look into the height of the ridge and it's within it.
Done deal.
All right, okay. Setback was another one. And I honestly forget, because it's been a while, but it was my understanding that the Bill, Mr. Vogel addressed every one of your concerns.
He did not.
Well, that's, you know.
He did not. So, I've come up with more concerns, I've reworded it, I've included pictures, I've included, you know, conversations from the different boards. The only one that I'm about to approach again is the zoning board. But I just don't have the money, and I don't think that the town should have to go and afford legal fees for this, when the enforcement officer is not doing his job.
Mrs. Kuhn, you've spent, okay, thank you.
That's your opinion, okay?
Right.
I mean, respectfully, I remember you coming in and saying that. There are appeal periods when a decision has been rendered, okay? They're short, they're statutory, it's not the town thing, it has to do with the state saying.
Understood.
And second of all, whether we agree or disagree on what happened, those are your times to appeal. If you've decided, and you found out now, then your legal rights are private rights, and you may have a disagreement with the building inspector, the town, zoning board, the planning board, frankly, even the Board of Selectmen, although it's not our jurisdiction, it's not our purpose, we did not permit that place. And the one thing I do know is, is that, guess he came in with a plan apparently, this is what I'm looking at, it's different than what you're actually building, but from my experience in zoning, okay, you have a box, you have a structure, and whether they present what it's going to look like, and it's completely changed, providing they build within that box, within that structure. Just as if you added on to your house and said, "I'm actually just going to do a one room," but you can, you could add two or three, because it fills within that space, within that box. You, as a private citizen, as a property owner, just like somebody here, has the legal right to do it. Whether I like it or not, whether I think the structure is much more larger than maybe it should be, whether the fact that, you know what, it was a smaller house that was turned into apartments that had been nonconforming status for probably the past 60 some odd years, and then what they ended up doing was maximizing, building as much as they could within the building envelope by making all those units, whether it was four, five, six.
By special permit.
By special permit.
Special permit.
Let him finish.
The bottom line is, that was through the zoning board of appeals.
Mm-hmm.
And if it goes to the planning board, they too have rights under special permit. This is a nonconforming, so it goes directly to the ZBA. Because I used to be the chairman of the ZBA, and I understand your concerns. This is going on all over town. The reality of the matter is, is that we as a board appoint people to the ZBA, we do not appoint to the planning board, that's an elected body. We try as hard as we can to find people who are interested, but we are limited by the number of people who are interested in getting involved. Tonight, there are some people who are interested in getting involved in committees, and we as a board cannot, shall we say, determine through the law what's going on with the zoning board of appeals, okay? Because they are independent, kind of a quasi-judicial board, and we do not interfere with their decisions. All that we can do is, after three years of their term, either remove them if we feel that they're not doing their job. That is incumbent upon the neighbors, if they feel that something's wrong, to either raise it through an appeal, or in your circumstances, at this point, it is a private right. There's nothing that we can do. We've taken the building inspector, we've asked him to do different things. And our position, okay, is that we support him. You can disagree with him, but we support him because we've asked him to go out and take a look at that. As far as the massive nature of it, the fact that it's built right within the set, or the structure, or the footing of which the original building is, I would agree, it should be setback. But that's what a special permit process is, when people have nonconformities, okay, and they begin to kind of work in the structure they did. That's why there is a special process that the board takes a look at, and then decides whether they can work with this and do it. I can't, I'm not going to pass judgment on what the zoning board did. All I know is that we have looked through the building commissioner, not just once, but in various times, to say, "Go take a look at the project." And we have to rely on that. And I'm sorry that you don't want to hear that answer, but that's the truth of the matter. And I hate to say this, as much as I know from the legal process how expensive it is, based on my own profession, that's where you're at at this point. And I'm not trying to say, "Go on and do it," because that's the way it has to happen. But from the town's perspective, after our own due diligence of looking at this, we cannot, as a board, turn around and say, "Fine, we're going to sue these people," because we don't have a legitimate basis based upon the expert opinions who represent the town's interests, who are town employees, doing it for the public. And we're not going to go against that. And I'm sorry to have to say that to you, and I know you don't want to hear that, but that's where we're standing.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
And I just want to make sure you understand why we are taking the position we have.
Right. So, I think that you're missing the point, okay? I accept the zoning board decision, and I accept the plans that were presented and they made their decision on, okay? And now, the builder has gone back and made something much larger. They he increased the massing. The reason that the zoning board approved it, because he had said and produced the drawings, where he had cut back on the massing. But then he went and did whatever he wants. So, if the zoning board had seen what he actually is building, they would not have given him it. So, alls I'm asking is that he builds what was approved. What was presented at the meeting, the drawings here, that's what I'm asking. So, what's going to happen with Toll Brothers? They get approved, they get zoning, planning, and then they just go and do whatever they want?
That's a separate issue, and we're not here to discuss that tonight.
Separate issue.
So, please don't bring that up, because that's a speculation at this point.
Okay. So, what's going to happen if your neighbor all of a sudden says, "Oh, I'm going to build this tiny little house with two windows," and builds this huge house with 20 windows?
Let's take down the tone a little bit, because it's getting revved up. I'll tell you what I would do. I'd appeal it at the zoning board, and then I'd sue them if I felt they did something legally wrong. But that's my private right to do it. I'm not coming to this board and saying, "Board of Selectmen, you town folk, you're going to pay my bill to fight my neighbor, because guess what, I disagree with what they're doing." Nobody expects that, nor should they. If there is a wrong that somebody's perpetrating against the town, against the town's decisions, in this board, or the zoning board, or the planning board, all of which have the opportunity, then I would say, yes, the town takes that on, for town purpose, but not for private rights. And I think that's where you're at at a point, and as much as you don't want to hear that, you know, that's where you have to pursue your legal rights on your own against this, and if you're correct, fine, but if you're not, then I'm sorry, that's, that's the way it ends up happening.
So, can you just take a minute and look at the drawings?
Well, over the walk-in. We'll take it, no, that's it. We'll take it as advisement and look under them.
Yes, I will look at this, I will look at this, okay?
I would appreciate it if we could meet one-on-one and go over them, and I can specifically show you. Because I don't think you're looking at the right.
We see it. We see it.
Right.
We see the dormers are different in the two plans, we get it.
I'll be happy to meet with you one-on-one and talk to you about it.
Why is he not?
But I just want you to be understanding that, I'm not convinced that I'm going to be re-convinced, but I certainly will happy to share with you my experience and my knowledge from my days on the zoning board, and why maybe, I can maybe explain something differently that maybe.
The zoning board is fine, the planning board is fine, it's the enforcement of their decisions that I am asking the board to do, because the building enforcement officer said he doesn't see anything wrong.
Last thing, and then, because I know we're over it. As they say, you have a building envelope within the property that you're allowed to build, and you have a cube that goes up to the limits that you're allowed to do. People, contractors have, shall we say, revisions. Providing they go within that cube, within that building envelope, they're free to modify it. It happens a lot when somebody says, "We have a room that actually needs to be added on by a foot or two," because guess what, it's smaller than it should be. Providing it's within the limits of that cube, that building envelope, providing it's within the zoning bylaws.
I don't question.
They're allowed to modify it, and if that's what happened here, then I hate to tell you, there's nothing else that can be done.
And the planning board had stated that on the last meeting. There's a process, they need to come back and get the redesign approved, and they have not done any of that.
Well, that may be the planning board's opinion, but it's the zoning board. And unless the planning board wants to sue the zoning board, then I would say, feel free, because then you'll find out between the boards. But the bottom line is, the planning board does not have the authority, nor does it have the jurisdiction, over this issue. And that's, I'm just telling you, that's the bottom line.
Why did they make these own decisions?
So, John is probably the most experienced on the board with regards to this issue. He's generously offered to sit down with you one-on-one. I think you should take him up on that.
Okay.
And that would be next step, if that's okay with you.
I'm free, be free.
Can I just ask the people that have the, no?
I'm sorry, it's just, it's just not within the walk-in procedure.
Okay.
Okay? But thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
Any other Watkins? Okay, they're being done. Report from the town administrator, Trish.
Thank you, I'll be brief, given the time. I just wanted to remind folks, and it's on the agenda, that we have the dedication and ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new library, which is July 18th at 10 a.m. So, you can put that on the calendars, and if you're in the area, please stop by.
Someone go into that?
Maura is.
Yeah, I'm going.
I am.
Yep.
You going? Yeah.
10 a.m. on July 18th. I wanted to take this opportunity to commend the police and fire departments for a very safe and trouble-free July 3rd and 4th of July celebration. I want to give particular credit to Chief Stewart, who came to the board of his own initiative to ask to close Humrock Beach. We had no medical issues, no medical calls at Humrock for the first time, and who knows when. And I just want to publicly state how proud I am of our police department, and also our fire department, who are out there enforcing the bonfire compliance. So, it's really, you know, it's taken five years to get there, but I think we're finally on the road to having Humrock for families. So, thank you.
I agree with you, Maura, and I don't think any of us received one complaint. Just gratitude, so.
Just by comparison, if I'm not, you can correct me if I'm wrong, zero arrests, I think they said three PCs.
Three PCs.
But zero arrests, which I think, if I'm not mistaken, in the past, anywhere between 150 to 200 arrests in one day, that tells you what that did. And I mean, personally, you know, in the future, if it's a year or, or a year or two or three, we can reconsider doing, changing it, but until then, I'm like, that tells you what a benefit it was for the residents of Humrock, as well as to our public servants or, Public Service Department.
The other thing that I wanted to mention is that Situate Facts Coalition is planning a overdose prevention training next week sometime. We don't have the exact time and location, we think it may be on July 18th, but we will send out on the town's website, email blast, Twitter, and Facebook, the exact time. I think, you know, that's very much in our thoughts the past week, and this was already in the planning stage. And Anne Marie Galvin, our facts coordinator, asked that I share that with the board, so we can get that out publicly. Next week for sure, so hopefully folks will, will go and attend that. The third thing that I want to talk about, and the final thing, is Lieutenant Governor Polito called our office today, just wanting to know how the governor's office and her office can help the town more, and if we needed anything. We chatted for over 30 minutes, and the three main things we chatted about was to thank her and the governor for our local aid, which is up about $39,000 from our original projection. But certainly, anything above what we had, or at least what we had in the prior fiscal year, to maintain services in town is always beneficial. And also, to reiterate their support for funding or supplementing federal funding for foreshore protection, and the grants that we've received, millions and millions of dollars in. And finally, one that's near and dear to your heart, is money for roads, and the Chapter 90 Transportation Bond Bill. So, those were the three major things that we talked about, and again, both Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito are former selectmen, so they have an inherent understanding of the needs of local government, so it's really, probably the best partnership that I've seen with the governor's office and local communities during my career. And that's all I have.
Thank you, I think your three highlighted items are perfect. Kim, before we go to the next thing, can you check on one thing with the library, Trish? It just came up. The meeting rooms, and the time, the rules and regulations with how long folks can sign out the meeting rooms for, so is it past 8:30 at night, or are there some stipulations? Just hearing some feedback that folks are being asked that they have to be done with their meetings by 8:30.
I do know that there are some changes to the building, given the security measures and the access, but I can circle back with Jesse to find out specifically what they are.
Yep.
Can I, can you add two things to that list? The fire hydrants that are in the hallways there, I don't know if they're properly marked, so if someone can look and just see if there's supposed to be signs for them.
Extinguishers?
Stick, just stickers that say fire extingu, because they're, I guess they're inset into the wall, so that people can't walk into them.
Are you talking about the fire extinguishers?
Extinguish, what did I say?
Hydrants.
Hydrants, yeah, the fire hydrants, you know.
Inside those walls.
Because they're, you don't want to trip on one of those.
Well, you know, we really want to make sure it's sprinkled, but.
Probably signs in the hallways.
I think there's supposed to be signs on the, on the wall that say that it's there, because it can't.
Yeah, I know, like, the occupancy signs for the various meeting rooms and stuff need to go out too, but I'll check on that, Tony.
And also, there's, there's a sign on one of the two spaces for handicap van, and I think it's on the wrong space. So, I think you need to move it over one sign to the left.
Okay.
Right.
I'll check on them. Thank you.
And did you, it looked like you've, they, they put those dormers on the lights, the shields on it.
No, that's what they look like.
Oh, really? So, are we looking into putting some sort of other suppressant of the light in the parking lot?
That is yet to be determined.
But that's the way it was? That's the way the light originally was, the way it is right now?
Yeah, there's no baffles on those lights, to my knowledge, right now.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. But we're talking about that, because I know some of the neighbors were, were concerned about the.
Excuse me?
They came to the last public building meeting.
Yes, they did, yep.
Oh, did they?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're looking into that.
We have a quote, but the problem at the last public building commission meeting is the lights were not functioning the way they were designed. So, we wanted to fix that problem before we did the impact, and also, the chief of police attended the meeting in terms of what he will require for lighting.
Okay.
Which is sort of driving this issue.
Well, it's being discussed, it's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. It's still an open item.
Right. And it's beautiful. The building came out, I just went to it for the first time the other day, and it looks pristine. So, kudos to everybody.
Anything else for Trish? John?
No, thanks.
Trish, anything else?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. All right, moving on to the first scheduled item, discussion and vote for the acceptance of a donation to the Situate Police Department. We have Kim and Brendan and Jane.
Jane Frank, and I'm the chairman of Community Christmas, and this is my vice president, Kim Stewart.
I'll sit. Yep.
So, just a little bit, a short brief statement with a little bit of history. For the past 28 years, Situate Community Christmas has been providing holiday gifts and food to families and elderly in Situate who face challenges during the Christmas season. And with the passing of our founder, Susan Pippin, our mission has been expanded to more of a year-round charity effort and resource for our citizens. We can do this because we received a request from Susan's estate, and for the past three years, we've been working with other Situate charities, social worker in town, and also the clergy, to meet some of those emergency needs for our residents. We will continue to be that resource for Christmas gifts and food, as well as opening up to working with the food pantry, town social worker, clergy, and other charities in Situate. And early in her film fro, career, Susan identified a need at the police department for dry suits to be used in water rescue operations. She purchased these suits and donated them to the Situate Police Department. So, Situate Community Christmas would like to make a donation of two of these new Mustang suits, in Susan's name, to be used by the Situate Police Department to replace the older outdated equipment. We are continually grateful for the support of everyone in Situate, and we hope this gift assists the officers and their dangerous rescue operations and the residents in time of need.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
On a motion?
To all of you. I just want to ask one question, what's a Mustang suit?
That's why we brought Brendan.
So, what they are, they're, it's a dry suit. So, the officers, officers would wear them during the colder months or during inclement weather. It would protect the officers from like, hypothermia. What we have now are their flotation suits, they're a little bit different, so if the officers were going in the water, it provides buoyancy, but it doesn't keep them dry. So, looking, looking at the functionality of these suits, these could be worn by our officers in our special operations vehicles, our Humvees, things that go into water during storms, our patrol vessel during the colder months, things like that, and would help protect the officer from the elements, more than just allowing them to float, which is what the current suits do.
Great. Thank you, Kim. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Coast Guard has, I've tried one, they're pretty nice.
You tried one on?
It's like. I did, they're very nice.
We'll size you up before we leave.
He's a medium.
He's a medium. Well, thank you very much, and you do wonderful work, and it's nice to see that it's expanded all year round, you know, on Susan's behalf as well. It was a wonderful, you know, asset to town for years. Stay tuned.
Yeah, just to, just to add to what Maura said, Susan Pippin was a selectman, she was a budsman, she served on many, many committees in this town, she loved this town. She started Community Christmas, you can help me with everything else she did, the animal shelter. animal shelter.
We'd be here all night.
Right, so this woman dedicated her life to the town of Cituate, and, and it's, it's so great that she did it after she's gone as well, by donating all the different events she did. And she was tough, she and I butted heads over the years, but she was, she was firm, and she was.
Me too.
She really cared about this town, all the historical stuff that she did, and John, you know as well, and Sean as well. She, she really loved this town, so thank you.
Thank you for saying that, thank you.
We're trying to keep up that endeavor.
Yeah. It's, every time you drive down the street, she, she touched something, you know, so it's.
A motion?
Will the board of selectmen accept a donation from Cituate Community Christmas and Susan Pippin's estate to the Cituate Police Department for a purchase of two new dry suits in the amount of $2,994.40?
Second?
Second by Mr. Danighy, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, have a good evening. Okay, moving on, is Keith O'Callahan here? We'll begin the discussion and vote for change of hours in liquor license for O'Callhans.
How you doing?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Just your name and address for the record, please.
Keith O'Callahan, 14 Marshfield Ave, Cituate, Homarock Beach. I'm just here for a change of hours, and changing from a malt and wine license to a all alcohol license for my business.
So did it, it's always been beer and wine?
Yeah, it's always.
Yes, for the restaurant, it's always been beer and wine, and we do have a venerable restaurant all alcohol liquor license.
Okay.
And Mr. O'Callahan would like to change the category of his license to all alcohol.
But your hours are remaining the same?
Yeah.
New hours.
New hours.
Which basically is just making it open at 10:00 AM on Sunday.
It was always till 1:00 AM on Saturday?
Yes.
Was it till 1:00?
11:00 AM, 11.
11:00 AM.
11:00 PM, sorry, yeah. So we were looking to do 1:00 AM.
So we basically approved all of this at the May 30th meeting for beer and malt, so we're just approving the same time, just the different licenses for liquor.
So didn't this, beer and wine, and they applied for it like three, four years ago? This was before Mr. Callahan, you had, had purchased the, the business, correct?
Yeah.
This didn't have it like 10 years ago, this was just beer and wine, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Here's my, I'm just saying, I'm all for trying to expand opportunities, business opportunities, certainly in Hemarock. I just have some reservation, because I know that we expanded it with Sand Hills, but only to beer and wine. We were trying to avoid the liquor aspect. However, if I'm not mistaken, I think there's a liquor store across the bridge in Marshfield?
I have a liquor store in my establishment also.
Oh, where? You mean in?
In Voyage.
Where, in the Voyage?
Yeah.
Oh, so you, you have liquor already that you're selling?
I have beer and wine only.
Beer and wine, but not liquor is what I'm saying.
Yeah, what?
This is, we don't have, we don't have any more, we don't have any more all alcohol package store licenses available in town.
This is last one.
This is just for the restaurant.
There are no more.
This is not for the package.
He has two different stores. One is the restaurant.
Yep.
One is the package store.
Okay.
So this, we're talking about the restaurant, so that when you want to sit down and have dinner, he can sell to people.
I got you.
So I'm trying to get a winter clientele as well, not just a summer.
I got you. Okay, okay. That is the clarification I needed, only because, but you are in the business district, so I have to make sure I state that, because that's, that should have been the consideration that needs to be played in. So, okay, I have no problems.
Thank you.
How many seats are in the restaurant?
Uh, 50.
Five zero?
Yes.
I don't see, yeah, I don't see a problem with anyone in the audience here to object or support him, I'm just kind of curious.
Is there anyone in the audience, any of the butters that have any comments? I don't see any.
All right. I don't, I don't see a problem.
Any other questions?
Not for the first one.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the change of license?
Move to approve the application for a change in category license for O'Callahan LLC DBA The Voyage, Homarock, Massachusetts, from a wine and malt to an all alcohol. The premise is located at 14 Marshfield Ave, which consists of 2,100 square feet, one floor with two rooms.
I'll second that.
Mr. Danighy is seconding, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. When we said two rooms, that doesn't include your retail side, right? That's just your restaurant side?
So the restaurant is one side, one room, and the right side.
The liquor sales is only for?
The restaurant.
Right.
Restaurant only.
Right.
Do you have some questions about the hours?
Yeah, I, I think, was it always till 1:00 in the morning?
No.
Okay.
It was till 11:00.
11:00 PM.
Okay, so.
The only day he's asking till 1:00 AM is Saturday, Friday and Saturday.
The same with the entertainment license that we got a couple of weeks back. We got that till 12:00 PM.
Yeah, I'm just finding that 1:00 AM is, maybe I'm getting old, but 1:00 AM is very late.
No, I find it late myself also, but it's come 9:00 PM, 10:00 PM, in Homarock, it's like a light switch, and everything goes dead. But if there was entertainment on a Saturday night, and it goes on just a little longer, just have the option to go longer. But I've been using my own discretion, and if it gets quiet, we just shut it down.
I think, though, that's the same hours that they have down in the harbor. And I'm only saying is that, number one is, it is a business district, and the one thing I don't want to do is try to downgrade. The exception with Sand Hills is, it's a nonconformity, it doesn't exist, it's not in a business district. So it's in a residential area. You're in the business district.
But it's a heavy residential area. I know it's in a business district, but it's.
I always figure, you know, I try to balance that, but I'm trying, when I look at the business districts, I'm like, how do we try to promote business to keep it, especially in Homarock? Because it's such a small, limited one. And if it gets noisy, then I'd say we'd probably reconsider it next year, if it turns out that it's.
This is coming from the community of Homarock also, this is why I'm coming here, in front of you guys as well. It's, this is brought up a few times. You know, they have nowhere to go during the wintertime fall season, you know, they want something, somewhere to go, because they said they hadn't got a place to go.
Till 1:00 in the morning?
So I'm trying to provide that for the community of Homarock.
Till 1:00 in the morning?
No. Honestly, I don't think it'd be 1:00 AM. I think that's extremely late. But the option is going to be there for 11:00 PM, 12:00 PM. I would like that. But, you know, like I said, I use my own discretion, once it gets quiet, we just close.
We find, and this is not going to come across well, but I don't, I'm not criticizing you all, but when we give something out, and people say they're using our discretion, as soon as they're out of the room, you know, I got it and I'm using it, so.
I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, and I'm not.
From what, from what I, when I took this business on, from what I, from what it was to what it is now, it's a completely different place.
Oh, I've been there, it's great.
So I've been doing the right thing all the time, so I don't, I don't plan on changing that.
Any way you could settle on 12?
I could settle on 12.
I like 12.
All right, well, why don't we do this? If you're willing to do 12, that's just for Saturday night, the rest of the night you have.
Friday, Saturday.
Uh, Friday and Saturday, then let's test it this year.
Sure.
And if it's a problem, how about next year, I'd be happy to say, go back to 1 if you feel that it's in, you might not say that, you might say, no, it's fine. How does that sound?
I would say 12 is going to be okay.
All right.
Okay, great.
Should I give a motion? I'll move to approve a change of liquor license hours, Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM till 12:00 midnight. And from Sundays, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Any more discussion?
No.
Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So just remind us next year, a change, and I'll be, you know, be happy to make the motion to 1 o'clock. How's that?
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Quick question, Lorraine, do we, how many more do we have as far as the restaurants or do we?
You know, we're going to be doing, we have another restaurant request that just came in, that you're going to be hearing in public hearing on your next meeting. So I'm going to be reverberating with Antoneta, I'm going to go through everything, and I'm going to do a final check, and I'll give you a quota.
Perfect.
License quota as to where we are.
Good.
By the end of July, by our next meeting.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Is Catherine Terrio in the audience?
Yes.
Hi, Catherine. Just your name and address for the record.
Catherine Terrio, 34 Bridge Ave.
And you're requesting an outdoor entertainment for a DJ for wedding reception?
Uh, yeah.
Great, on the 15th, so that's this weekend.
No pressure.
Really?
No, you can't.
I don't cry often, but I'm.
Okay, great. It's just for a DJ, and you've notified all the butters?
I have, I have the letter here, if you'd like to see it, that I sent to them.
No, you can do it, that's okay, but just as long as, nobody had any issues?
Aside from offering parking generously, nope, not at all.
That's nice. Anybody in the audience that has any issues with the DJ for a wedding? Okay, I don't see any.
Thank you. It is not my wedding, no, it's my stepson's.
Oh, nice, well, congratulations.
Thank you. I did specify in the letter that, and I told, we've communicated to the DJ to end at 11:00, and I let the neighbors know that, so.
Any questions?
No.
Motion?
I'll move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for a DJ for wedding reception on July 15th, 2017, at 34 Bridge Ave, from 5:30 PM until 11:00 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a great weekend, congratulations.
Thank you.
Are the wards present?
We are.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Suzie Ward.
Hi, Suzie.
Henry Ward, with 40 Surfside Road, and we're hosting a rehearsal dinner for our goddaughter on Friday, August 18th, from 5:00 to 8:00. And we request an outdoor entertainment permit, we're having Nolan Donato do, I think, his premiere performance.
Too lucky.
He says, he sings country and Irish. It's three hours, we've notified the butters and we have the tent permit.
Perfect. I've never heard him sing, but I see his mother post his performances all the time.
They're coming, his parents are going to come to listen to him, because they're so excited, so.
Oh, great.
Respectfully, we hope we get the permit.
Okay. I don't think there'll be too many problems. Any other questions for them?
No, no, that's fine.
No, no.
Motion?
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for a DJ and singer with a microphone for a backyard party at 40 Surfside Road on August 18th, 2017, from 4:30 PM till 8:00 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you. We're launching his career.
Yes, it will be.
He's got a great voice.
I heard.
Maureen Ray from Cituate Harbor Yacht Club? Hi, Maureen.
How are you?
How are you? Actually, you have, there's attachment that we have in your packet.
Yep.
Is there a number of different dates that I think we need to go through?
Yes. I'm here to, to ask for a outdoor entertainment for the following events. The first one is July 12th for a splash party, there would be a DJ in our pool area from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. On Saturday, July 15th and 29th, the Cituate High School Jazz Band will be performing on our lawn with amplification from 5:00 to 8:00. Saturday, July 22nd, we have a singer coming in from 6:30 to the 8:00 on the lawn with amplification. Saturday, July 28th, we have a party on our back deck, 6:00 to 11:00 with singer, amplification on the back deck. Friday, August 4th, is luminary, we're going to have a DJ, it will be under a tent that is attached to our main clubhouse building. Then on Saturday, August 5th and the 12th, the high school jazz band is back again from 5:00 to 8, 5:00 to 8:00 on the lawn. And then our last event is Saturday, August 12th, is the fashion show. That will be an announcer with music between the air tent and our clubhouse on the lawn.
And then the one on the 16th goes from 7:00 to 10:00, you said?
Yes.
Oh, that's a fashion show, okay.
Yes, just an announcer with a little bit of music for the models on the stage. And I do have the butters list, I have a letter, and all of the letters went out today.
They went out today?
Yes.
Okay. And in this area, we usually do, this usually falls within everything in that area, right? 11?
Yeah.
11 is on the back deck, so it shouldn't amplify to the neighbors too much.
It goes out to the water. It will go out to the harbor, yeah.
I'd be first cliff, but we have not heard any complaints in the past.
Right. It's pretty much the same thing we did last year, it's the same type of events.
Okay.
Motion?
Any other questions or a motion?
No, no, no questions, I'm fine.
Motion?
Do we have to read them all again, or can we just?
I'll move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for the Cituate Harbor Yacht Club on the following dates. One, Wednesday, July 12th, for a DJ from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM for a splash party. Two, Saturday, July 15th, for the Cituate High School Jazz Band with amplification from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Three, Saturday, July 22nd, for a singer with amplification from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Four, Friday, July 28th, for a singer with amplification from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM for a deck party. Five, Saturday, July 29th, for the Cituate High School Jazz Band with amplification from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Six, Friday, August 4th, for a DJ from 6:00 to, 8:00 PM for luminary. Seven, Saturday, August 5th, for the Cituate High School Jazz Band with amplification from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Eight, Saturday, August 12th, for the Cituate High School Jazz Band with amplification from 5:00 PM until 8:00 PM. And finally, Wednesday, August 16th, for an announcer with music from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a fashion show.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Enjoyed the summer, thank you very much, it's been a nice one. Is Kara Tondorf here? I couldn't tell whether or not this was crossed off or not.
I think they, they're going to, no, I think they, they asked for, they might be late, they were wanting for a second call, that's okay.
Okay. All right.
After 8:00 is, I think, what they indicated, I mean, at least.
Oh, okay. All right. So we can move to the next one and come back to that. Is Molly LaLancek, did I pronounce that right?
Hi, Molly.
Hi, Molly. Come on forward, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
If you could just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Molly LaLancek, for Malbrook Road in Duxbury.
Okay. And I understand that you've bought Morning Glories?
Almost, Thursday.
Oh.
Wow. Oh, congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great news. What are your plans for it?
Um, so I worked there all through high school, all through college, for like eight years. I went to school in Vermont, so I stayed up there after I met my husband from Vermont. And we just moved back, so I've been managing it since I've been back. And I just, I want to take it over. I love Morning Glory's.
Excellent.
Yeah. I've always wanted a bakery. Like, I went to school for business, and my final presentation was a bakery business plan. So it kind of all just fell into place.
And how you get to put it into place?
Yeah.
That's excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions for her? Any big changes for it?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Um, nothing major. We're going to make our own bagels.
That's a need, so we'll look forward to tasting those.
How is the same?
Yeah.
Good. Great.
Terrific. Well, I wish you the best of luck if there's, if it passes, but I don't
think you'll have too much issue.
Make pretzels for the brewery that's going into.
I know. I want to reach out to them, so, yeah.
There you go.
That's a good idea, actually.
Yeah.
And make sure you go, John. Right down the street.
I'll certainly say hello down the street from where you are, so welcome to the neighborhood.
You're not too far.
He's on the other end, we're on the other end, so we're happy to have you. Being from Vermont, I also say it's a great place down here. Motion, move to approve a common vicuital license for a new owner, Molly LaLancek, is that correct?
Yeah, LaLancek.
LaLancek, sorry. Doing business Morning Glory's Bakery located at 52 Country Way, Situate, Mass. O2066, pending Board of Health approval.
They were there today, so that's all good.
Oh, good. Perfect. Seconded by Mr. Mignani. Any further discussion?
Does that have to be contingent on the sale? That doesn't happen yet.
Yeah, we can add that.
I'll move to amend to add contingent on sale of, purchase and sale, the closing, the closing.
That's Thursday, so?
Yeah.
Second?
Second? Mr. Mignani, second in that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Can't wait to see it.
Thank you.
That's the second one, and then, of course, there's the butcher shop up around the corner.
Yeah.
A lot of things.
We're not going to go hungry, John.
No, we're not. From the looks of you and I, I don't think we're going hungry in a long time.
Yourself.
Next on the agenda is Heritage Days, Linda and Elaine, Linda Ferguson, Elaine Bargisov. There's a larger packet with a lot of detail that's been featured for you that you have.
Yep. Ladies, good evening.
So, good evening. How's everybody this evening?
Good, good, great.
Working hard?
Oh, yeah.
So, do you want us to walk us through a little bit, any of the changes that are taking place this year?
Sure. I just want to make a statement first, actually, if I could.
Sure.
The Situate Chamber of Commerce is extremely excited about the event this year. A little bit of a background, the Chamber's been running Heritage Days for what will be our 49th year this year. And it's essentially run by four people who volunteer their time. Elaine and Claudia Oliver, who's not here, have been doing it for over 15 years. Anne Burbine, before that, did it for 15 years. Jean and I just joined in the organization of it last year. But it's a year-long event, and it's a lot of time and effort and volunteering, and none of us get anything personally out of it, except for that warm feeling you get for doing something fun. I guess, I don't know. But we've been in the planning process, and we have done our best to reach out to everyone and anyone we think might want to participate. It's, Heritage Days has seen some changes over the years, including last year when we added several new activities that were free and provided transportation of historical sites, which upped the attendance of those sites. This year, we've added a sidewalk series, which is including, NOAA is bringing their 43-foot humpback whale. We also have a presentation by Captain Fred Dophney on fishing in Situate. Lieutenant Bartoloto, hopefully I didn't butcher that, is giving a training for two days on hands-on CPR, so that people can learn the hands-only CPR. NECN meteorologist Tim Kelly's going to be back, and Matt Brown's also going to be talking about Situate sea serpents. This year, we're hoping the music is going to be offering something for everyone, from country to rock to Irish pop, reggae, and oldies. It includes local and international talents. We've continued to add free events, including the baby animal petting farm. And the art association this year is not only doing a children's art tent, which is free, they're doing a teen art tent, which is free. And they're also going to be doing a community art piece, where people, older children, older teens, young adults, I guess, and adults are going to be asked to participate and take some time to add to this community piece of art, which is, you know, I think a really great thing. We recognize that Heritage Days weekend has really become a town-wide event, and we've done our best to incorporate all the weekend events, including the Rotary Nights at Columbus, Situate band events into our advertising, just to show off how great Situate is and what a wonderful community event this whole weekend is. We have worked really hard to lessen the impact on the harbor by having to only close down the parking for the music stage starting Thursday night at midnight, which is a big change that used to be closed down Wednesday and Thursday. And we also recognize that for everyone's safety, security, and insurance purposes, that we cannot have groups, vendors, or kids setting up booths that have not been approved by the Chamber, nor can there be any roving vendors or people selling, listing, or distributing anything. We've worked very, very closely with Sergeant Gil Martin and are forever grateful to him for all the time he's put in, the guidance and advice that he's given us over the years, as well as Mike Green from the DPW. He really does a great job for us and his guys all weekend long. We're looking forward to this year and working with all the town departments, businesses, and vendors to make Heritage Days 2017 something we can all be proud of and enjoy. So I just wanted to put that out there and thank Elaine, Claudia, Jean, Anne, and all the other people that have worked for the last 49 years on Heritage Days.
It's a great weekend.
So, changes, what are the changes, really? I think that Sergeant Gil Martin, we're instituting a couple of changes as far as security goes, based on what's happening around the world. So there will be some Jersey, cement Jersey barriers set up at the end of the street this year. The DPW's supplying them, and they'll be moving them. Coastal Heritage Bank and Rockland Trust have their drive-through on Saturday morning till noon, and then after that, they'll be moved to the end of the street, just to provide some added security and stuff.
On Front Street?
On Front Street. Yeah. The stage is still going to be in the back. We are, I mean, everything else is basically the same. The times-
Where's the whale going?
The whale will be on Front Street, starting at noon time.
Down by the bank.
So it's going to be, the sidewalk series is actually, I only made one copy because, of course, I was scrambling to get this done, but you can just bring that up and show them. The sidewalk series is actually taking place in front of Coastal Heritage Bank. So, right when the people get off the bus or wherever, on Saturday, will be the fire department doing their thing all day. And also NOAA with the humpback whale for, I think it's like three hours. And then on Sunday is when we'll have still the fire department, Matt Brown, a puppeteer, the captain, Fred, and Tim Kelly. So that's all taking place on Front Street, and the road's closed there, so there shouldn't be any issues.
Pi social?
Looks nice.
Pi social going forward still?
The, oh, yes, pi social. Situate Band is having a concert on Friday night, St. Mary's, luminaria, Nights at Columbus, Pancake Breakfast, First Friday Falls and that weekend. So, yeah, all the other things are still going on. Ellis House is open. Gatra is going to be providing, helping us, well, they'll get paid, but they're providing the transportation to the historical sites, so people that are in, at, in the harbor, that have parked the cars at, like, the Green Bush Tea Station, can hop the bus in the harbor and go to this historical sites without having to go back and get the car and then drive it, and, you know.
And can you talk a little bit about the Irish Cottage? Did you change the way in which you are?
Yep. So that, that is coming, and it was a great event last year. It was well-attended. It helps us raise money, you know, for the, for the event. And last year, they were given a card, and the card was punched. And I just made them a recommendation, and they agreed, we're going to be doing bracelets this year that are untied, that can't be then taken off and given to somebody else. But I think that, you know, I had a long talk with Sergeant Gil Martin. He was very comfortable with the way it ran last year. The police detail that was standing there for crowd control, he said he could have fallen asleep. There was really nothing, nothing happening. They were very strict about IDs. They didn't let people in that had, were obviously inebriated before they got there. So it was, I think it was a great addition to the event. It gives something for those people who don't have kids but still want to take part in the community event.
I'm glad you did the rest.
There'll only be one cottage this year instead of two.
Well, yeah, it's just going to be the one cottage this year.
Getting rid of the food?
Pardon me?
It'll be in the other tent.
Oh, it'll be in another tent?
Well, I don't know what they're going to sell, but they're going to be giving, serving-
No, no, no. There's one tent, and yes, they have to serve food because you have to serve food if you have alcohol there. The people that are serving it are basically the, there are bartenders that are tip-certified, as well as the distributors. So it's just like a tasting when you go into a liquor store. The distributors are there who are also tip-certified. And the idea is not to go in there and get drunk, it's to go in there and taste things that you wouldn't normally order if you hadn't ordered them before or whatever.
And that's just from Saturday, that's just Saturday and Sunday, right?
Yeah.
1:00 PM to 7:00, and 1:00 PM to 6:00 on Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I think the other, the only other change is that we were requesting that the administrative fees be waived. Not the permits or anything like that. I, you know, I have no problem with that, but the 10% that's added on to the town services is pretty costly, given the amount of money that we pay for the town services.
So you still pay for the-
Oh, we still pay their hourly wage, their overtime wage, just not that 10% fee that gets added on, which is-
It's like the tip.
Yeah. It's, it's over, probably close to $1,500. And that's kind of a lot, since we would like to maybe make some money this year. We've been in the red for a number of years. And by make money, I mean, the Chamber is nonprofit, and the money goes right back into the Chamber, the businesses in town, the scholarships, running the Pizza Palooza and the Candace Forum, things like that. We do not go on any cruise ships or anything like that, so.
How much, how many resources do we allocate to monitor this, in addition to DPW and the Situate Police? You know, I know the Board of Health, Jen has to be down there during-
She's there full-time.
She's there full-time all week.
And the police details, the time Sergeant Gil Martin, as Linda noted, is ours. Overtime for the DPW, for trash removal, any other unexpected responses that we have to do. Lorraine, what am I missing?
Fire Department?
Yeah. I mean, the Chamber pays for the fire, DPW, police, yeah.
Any other, anybody?
All I know is, and, you know, I used to be a part of the Chamber, and I never ran this event. This is the one event I tried to, and I just didn't have the time. They do an awful lot of hard-
Look at you, another chance.
I've got way too much going on now. They do work awfully hard. And you folks have tried very hard to expand the event, family event, and at the same time, bring back some traditional things. You know, the idea of the whale, I think, was phenomenal. It's going to be a cool thing for kids and families to take a look at, everybody involved. I like the fact that you're trying to incorporate more artwork, and the fact that it was taken off Front Street with the music, put to the side, now it's in the back, which is one of the things I'd always hoped it would do, because you have the view with the backdrop. That's phenomenal. Again, I said this with the St. Patrick's Day Parade. There are certain events that happen in this town that are, shall we say, signature events for the residents. And I always feel like, you know, we, as a town, you know, we don't have the money or the resources to have a cultural department that will engage in trying to do this type of thing. This is all privately, it's done by the business. You're spending $15,156 alone on paying the town employees who go and work there, whether it's overtime or not, to clean up for the fire and everything else. This is an additional 10% that we try to catch, because they're having to review things and the time and things like that. But in my view, the town should at least contribute in some respects, because it's kind of a partnership. This is a great event. And that's how I felt about, you know, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, feel about Heritage Days. There are a few other events that I know will probably come down as the same thing, but that's what makes Situate unique. And so I don't have a problem with waiving it. I know Tricia would, and do, or maybe, or maybe not, but it's just, I just see it that way. And I know the hard work. If we continue to have problems like we'd had in the past, I'd be more inclined to say no. But you've done a great job with it. So that's my feeling on it.
Tony?
Sure. So, A, I think the Chamber's done great things. Not only do they do things for the events of this, but they do things for, for local charities. You do things for local families. You do a lot of great things. A couple of things that were touched on, the Irish Cottage, I was against it last year. I'm still kind of against it this year, but I did go, and it wasn't as bad as I thought it could have been. I didn't go in it, but I, because I thought that would be hypocritical, but, but I did go and saw a lot of people using it. I don't know how you generate revenue on it, but it was busy. I don't like the fact that we're promoting drinking at Heritage Days, but it was, it was manned, it was, you know, there was food there, people were carded. I didn't see kids getting in and out of there, so I thought it was well-handled. I'm not sure how I feel on it. I'll decide in the next minute or so. The, the fee, I mean, there are extra costs. I mean, we don't just make up this cost and charge it. There are additional costs that the town doesn't charge you in terms of, you know, processing stuff, Lorraine's time, everybody's time to do this. But I, I, we had another event pop up like this, that I thought John made a good point. He makes another good point again. This is, this is a town event, and, and I think I agree with John in terms of waiving that fee. And I think there'll be other ones. I think, you know, we're going to, we're going to get beat up in the future, because sometimes we're going to charge it, sometimes we're not, but this is one time where I think, I think that the $1,500 is a nice donation for us to make to the event. And what was the other? Just a set of times. I mean, you've done a great job really freeing up the space on the street. What are we, we used to open up on, sometimes on Tuesday, start locking things down, and now we're, we're doing it on Thursday night. So really, the discontinuation of traffic and stuff for local merchants has been minimized, so great job on that as well.
Sean?
This is, it's exciting, you know. You're all business people. Couple of things. Talking to a couple of restaurant people in the harbor, and Linda, you know exactly what I'm going to say. Years passed, and I'm not being critical, but I'm sure it's fixed. You might have a vendor come down selling, you know, some type of food that one of our taxpayers is there 12 months a year doing the exact same thing. So if you could avoid that, you know, and I think you did maybe a year or so ago, you know, someone selling slices of pizza outside Harbor House, you know, things like that. What about parking? Did I hear or dream that you're going to allow parking on Kent Street on one side?
That was apparently in our permit last year and everything, but, so the parking, I call it the ocean side, but apparently Mike Green calls it the marsh side, the water side. Why isn't the permit last year to allow parking on that one side? The harbor merchants had asked us to ask for it as well, because, you know, they have people that come and go, and, you know. And, but then Mike, I guess, didn't get the, you know, get the permit last year, so all the horses were put up that said no parking. So I did talk to him this year, and I told him that, you know, we were going to make sure that we got that parking on that one side of Drifway. And, and he said, you know, as soon as it's approved, he'll, you know, take, he has a whole sheet that I think you guys got in the packet, and he'll just remove the horses from that side. But it was my understanding that the parking was supposed to have happened last year, and it was just a mistake with the saw horses, so people couldn't park down there, but.
Conflict with St. Mary's Church. When does it start? On Sunday, or?
Starts at nine, but they, I mean, they have a parking lot.
But as we all know, they, well, be first, come first, sir.
There's not supposed to be parking on the street. I mean, you know.
No, I'm just, I just, you know, trying to think of everything.
Yeah. No, I know. I know. It's one day.
How late is the music on Saturday?
Saturday, I just sent that up to you guys. I think that, yeah, Steve goes off at 6:00, so I would say that it's probably going to be over by 7:30, if it runs on time. So it's earlier than last year. It's last year tomorrow's?
I mean, two years ago, two years ago is two.
Yeah, it gets, you know what, there's streetlights down there, but it's really dark at night, and honestly, all of our, not all, everybody but the restaurants are all closed down there. You know, it's 6:00 or something. Most of the vendors leave. So the point of having, you know, live music till 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, when the lighting's not all that great, we just decided as a group was not really worth the, I mean, the expense. It adds a lot of expense between the DVW, fire, police, busing, and our merchants, you know, the idea of bringing people to the harbor and exposing them to the businesses down there was lost if they're all closed, so.
So I'm sorry, what time does it end?
It'll, it'll probably end by 7:30, and we figure, you know, Front Street gets off at 5:00. They have to be off and cleared by, no later than 6:00. And then our buses will run till about 9:00 to bring anybody back to the parking lot.
So it's still late?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other question? You know what I don't see this year is the, the departmental sign-off, Lorraine.
I know, just looking for that, too.
You know, we usually have a review from the police and the DVW, get checked and changes.
Yeah, we have all that back.
Okay. So we don't have that back yet?
No, we have all that back.
We do, okay.
I just need to do the packet.
Okay.
I think, I did speak with the building, Mr. Vogel, and he, you know, he needs to inspect the stage. And he asked about the Irish Cottage, not realizing that it was an inflatable thing, so he's all set with that. And Mike Green, I talked to, Sergeant Gil Martin and I went over stuff back in January, and, you know, we'll be talking pretty regularly now, from now until Heritage Days, but, but he was all set. He asked for a couple of changes to add some handicap parking, like, we're going to make signs to put, like, probably 10 spots down on, in Cole Parkway. And also, the buses that we have this year are all handicap accessible, including the Gatra bus was last year, too, but I don't think people realize that the Gatra bus was going to Front Street. But, so all the buses will be handicap accessible.
And then one last question. I saw your ad, which looks great, the video.
Oh, yeah.
Where is that playing?
It's going to be on several TV stations. I guess Comcast buys spots, but like E, the East Entertainment Station, NECN, Fox News, apparently, because it's hugely watched, USA, TNT, stations like that. So just do a little promotion, maybe reach a different audience.
Okay. You've certainly, you've done a great job pulling this all together. I know you've, you know, made a lot of great changes, and I hope this is successful. I think it will be, especially with your new ad and everything here. I'm just looking at some of these motions. Any, any other questions or discussion?
Any from the audience, or?
Yeah, that's true, too. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to have any comment or public feedback? I don't see any. No.
So, excuse me, Chairman Carron, so maybe enough, I suppose, we could do in accordance with all departmental feedback.
That's what I was going to ask you. I think we need to add that.
Yeah, that to the first motion.
Right, because we still have to make sure that all the Board of Health stuff is, is handed in on time. And if we can help Jen with that and get that stuff in on time, that would be great. And then also just pending all the other departmental approvals. Okay. So on the first one, you want to add that in?
Yeah, that would be great.
I'll move the Board of Selectmen to approve Heritage Days, starting on August 4th, with a setup time at 5:00 AM on August 4th, and takedown at 6:00 PM on August 6th, in accordance with all departmental responses and feedback.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Mignani. All in favor?
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the all-alcohol beverage one-day licenses for the Irish Cottage for August 5th and August 6th, 2017, pending certificate of insurance naming the town of Situate as the certificate holder.
Second?
Just discussion. Should we add in the time for that?
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
Well, we're just giving them the license, and on the license will be the time.
Okay. I mean, I see it noted in, in the documentation here. I just want to make sure that we also note the time.
Is it in the document, what did they put for the timing?
It's in the special, it's in the special events permit application?
I know the times are there.
So that'll get transferred over to the actual license?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What's the time? I can't, what is it?
Saturday, it's on the second page, down Saturday from 1:00 to 7:00, and Sunday from 1:00 to 6:00.
We can add that.
I think we should.
So I move to amend that motion to add the hours from 1:00 to 7:00 on Saturday and from 1:00 to 6:00 on Sunday.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Mignani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, I move the Board of Selectmen to approve waiving the 10% administration fees for the Situate Police Department, Department of Public Works, and the Situate Fire Department.
Actually, can I amend that motion? It's just one fee. It's not individual. It's the 10% administrative fee per Massachusetts state law.
All right. Strike that motion. I'll move the Board of Selectmen to approve waiving the 10% administration fees pursuant to Mass., Massachusetts general laws.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Mignani. Any further discussion?
None on this, but just one other comment question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sean, you have a more motion on the outdoor entertainment permit, which is-
Oh, we do?
Which is in the packet, on page 30.
Page what?
30 of the packet. Outdoor entertainment for Heritage Days.
Oh, let's see.
While we're finding that, can I just ask a question? You know, this is the first year you've done it since the parking's changed on Cole Parkway?
We're actually excited about that. That's going to work in our favor.
A little work?
Yeah.
That's all.
So Sean, that's a good question, actually, so, um, we have a traffic flow plan that they've worked out with Sergeant Kilmartin in the Police Department. If for any reason there should be a problem, you know, chief will respond appropriately with the traffic officer, so, um, you're right, Sean, so it's a new patent, so we might need to reconnoitre, but, um, we've worked on that and looked at it and are prepared to address anything that might bubble up.
Yeah. Is it different than what they're doing for the carnival this week?
Um, I don't think it's terribly different.
Because I know we have it posted on our website, which is nice.
We're doing the same thing for the carnival, yep.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Good.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for live bands with amplified music to perform during Heritage Days at the bandstand and on the main stage at Cole Parkway on August fifth and August sixth, two thousand seventeen.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, done.
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you.
So thank you for all your efforts, it's a lot of work for four people.
Thank you, yeah, well, if anybody wants to help, you know, contact us.
All right. Uh, and then Situate Historical Society is next, Mary?
Yeah, I'm Mary Porter, ninety-one Lawson Road, I'm a trustee of the Historical Society, and we're looking for approval for our centennial celebration event on July twenty-third.
Nice signs.
We, oh, thank you.
Signs Sam all over, that's nice.
Can Martell, the lady who accompanied me last time, did those signs, so.
Good job.
Thank you. We revisited all the things that we had left out the first time, and I think we're in good shape.
Good, yes.
Are there any, any questions?
Lorraine, is everything in order? I know we were missing a couple things, so thank you for tracking those down. Um, and can you just, for purposes, just tell a brief, let the audience know what this event is, because I think it's a real special event, just two seconds.
Two thousand seventeen is the centenary of the incorporation of the Situate Historical Society, so we wanted to do something to celebrate that. Um, kind of coincidental with that was a gift from Thomas Lawson's great-grandson, and a very lovely gift of items that we want to share with the public, so we thought we'd combine those two things. We really were focusing on the exhibit initially, and then we expanded it to make it more of a family event, and, um, we received funding from the Situate Education Fund to have a guided trolley tour of the former Dream Wald Estate. Um, we're having, um, a Lawson Time, a Lawson Tower Chimes concert to kick off the day, along with the exhibit and the trolley tours, um, we're gonna have food trucks, face painting for kids, um, then we're going to have the Situate Band join us around two-thirty in the afternoon to finish up the day, um, so.
That's all on July twenty-third?
Correct.
Great.
Noon to four.
Perfect, noon to four.
Please join us.
I'm just reiterating so everybody hears.
Yes.
Great. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions about this event? Don't see anyone. Board, any discussion?
No.
Nope?
Motion? Move to grant a special event permit to Situate Historical Society for the Dream Wald revised, revisited, it's all blurry, revisited, uh, recollections of Thomas W. Lawson and his magnificent farm on Friday, July twenty-third at, from eleven-thirty.
Sunday, July twenty-third.
Oops, says Friday.
Says Friday.
Oh.
On Sunday, July twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, from eleven-thirty until four PM, I can't see the rest.
Pending Board of Health approval.
Pending Board of Health approval.
Second?
Second by Ms. Danighy, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
There you go, thank you.
I'm sorry for the outdoor entertainment, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's for the Situate Band.
Okay.
All right, I mean, I'm waiting for my thing to pop up, other than?
One motion, I got it.
Yep.
Move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for live bands with amplified music to perform during Heritage Days at the bandstand and at the main stage of Cole Parkway.
It says Heritage Days.
Am I reading the right one?
No, I've got one, I got it. I'll move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for full band, the Situate Band music, it's not amplified, for, um, Dream Wald revisited recollections of Thomas W. Lawson and his magnificent farm on July twenty-third, two thousand seventeen, at forty-three Cudworth Road, the Little Red Schoolhouse, from two-thirty PM till four PM.
Second?
Second by Ms. McNatty, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Busy tonight, Jamie. Um, you said you're busy tonight?
So, I don't see the town halls here, right, are they here? Okay, all right, so that's it for all of our, um, entertainment license discussions. Uh, next for discussion is the senior center feasibility study, Chris?
Great, thank you. So I put this on the agenda because I just have five things that I want to share with the board and, and the public, and hopefully Ruth can pick it up in the Mariner. As you know, you had a presentation at your last meeting from the consultant we hired to do the senior center feasibility study, we had over eighty folks attend that meeting, and the purpose of that study was to look at four sites and determine a site assessment, uh, soils, and the cost to build on those sites, and if they were feasible for a senior center based on a number of variables like traffic, parking, access to other town facilities or whatnot. So, um, as part of this ongoing process, I want to make sure that, you know, we knew that the next steps were involved. So the first thing is that the Council on Aging Board of Directors is hosting two public forums for the public, with obviously we want to do particular outreach to our seniors, and that is Thursday, July twenty-seventh, at four, there's gonna be two different ones, one is going to be at four o'clock, and one is going to be at seven PM. And they're going to be held at our new Performing Arts Center at the, uh, high school. So that holds seven hundred and fifty people, so, uh, plenty of room for anybody in the community that wants to attend, and given the acoustics there as a performing arts space, I think can accommodate needs that folks have, um, to do that. So essentially, Mr. Bargain from BHNA is going to give the same presentation that the board, uh, saw at both of those places, and the intent is to solicit feedback from people about what's in the study, and also to bring that feedback back to the board. So that's one piece that we're working on now as far as going out into the community and soliciting the public's input. It's kind of following the same path as the Public Safety Complex. After, and I also want to say that before that meeting, there are copies of the study, hard copies, which is pretty thick, at the Council on Aging, and there's also one at the library. So if people wanna look at something and hear what, uh, they're gonna be talking about, it's being hosted by the Council on Aging Board and Linda Hayes. So after that happens, on the twenty-seventh, the, Mr. Bargman is going to go to the Public Building Commission, because they're the ones that commissioned the RFP ostensibly, to, um, see the report, and they were also in attendance at your meeting on, um, last month, um, and incorporate any additional feedback we need, so the report actually gets finalized. So it's not a final report, because we want to see if we need additional stu-, you know, additional information or anything like that. And then it'll come back to the board, um, to decide what, you know, what happens from there, we have four sites, what's the optimum site based on the feedback. But there's one more thing, um, before that happens, and that is we're going to also do a Survey Monkey, I think Tony suggested that at the last meeting. Linda and her staff are working on that, we should have it available next week, so, she's on vacation this week, so we're gonna do a Survey Monkey, probably have some hard copies in the Council on Aging for folks, and we'll analyze all that data, and so.
Can you send us the questions before you send it out?
Yes, I will, um, that's the plan.
Okay.
Um, 'cause Linda's doing the draft, and then it's coming to your office to, um, make sure, you know, you, you capture everything, you're limited on how many questions you can ask on Survey Monkey, but I think we'll be okay. Um, and then, basically, the board should have everything it needs, uh, to, to move on. So the only other thing I wanted to ask members tonight is if, at this juncture, is there anything more that you think we should be working on in terms of getting you to, you know, making a decision, um, while this process is going on contemporaneously?
I think we should have another meeting at a selectmen's meeting possibly, at a bigger venue where people can, can talk to us about their thoughts. So, 'cause we're not gonna be, I mean, at the presentations with the seniors, they're gonna be hearing the presentation, not really giving us feedback, or I don't know, I don't know what the session is, but I think there, there may be an opportunity for us to have another open dialogue with people in terms of.
Well, my question was, who's moderating that meeting? You know, do you want one of us to moderate that?
It's being hosted, it's being hosted by the Council on Aging Board, it's their meeting, they're the hosts, Linda, and then it's to take that feedback that we get at those two meetings and for BHNA to distill it to stuff, and then obviously bring it back to you.
I think what we should do also is, as Tony said, we should have another independent meeting set up, um, to take feedback, uh, because as you say, we have two presentations, presentations are gonna have a lot of feedback, some people are gonna hear it for the first time, give them time to digest it, and then I think we definitely need to have another meeting to, uh, dialogue. One, number one, it could be a third opportunity for somebody who hasn't seen the pres-, you know, the presentation to come and talk and add some things, but I think it's important for us to kind of hear what people are saying. I like the Survey Monkey, the only other thing I was wondering about is whether or not there's a possibility of doing something in, uh, hard copy, um, and I don't know if, if we were to send out just an envelope to the elected, or the, how, whether it's the property owners, whether it's the, um, the registered voter list, only because some people, I know if my mom and dad were alive, they have no clue how to, or had any clue how to work a computer. Just wanted to see if we can make sure that we give an opportunity one last time to those who don't, that's all.
Yeah, I don't, that might, piece might be tough, because the report, as you know, is over seventy-five pages.
Not that I would send the report, but just like the survey.
Oh, the survey.
They can do it by hand, they're gonna have to go take a look at it, but at least talk to people, but.
We could put it at the library, we could put it at the senior center, we could put it at the grocery store, we could put it at, at places and have a drop box, because someone came up to us at the meeting and said specifically that.
So, John, are you suggesting we have another meeting, and just, that'd be the only topic?
Yeah, I, I think so, because, you know, there's a lot of discussion, and I think there'll be a lot of good feedback, some people might have some observations that we don't, and maybe it's a, it's a kind of a good working meeting to talk to people about, what do you like?
Not here and not at the EOC.
Yeah, I, I would agree, I think we'd probably have to think of either, I don't know, I have yet to go to the library, but if there's a meeting room there, but they can hear, that's the key, gotta have a boost.
Performing Arts Center, I think, is.
That might be it, that's a thought.
Get it the third time.
Yeah. That's just my, I think if it works that way, then.
That's fine, that's the point.
This is the opening place in July, right? The survey goes out in July, the forms are in July. When's the Public Building Commission scheduled for?
They'll meet in August.
In August, okay, so maybe after that, right?
I'd say August, yeah.
So we're the last to come back.
August, next month.
Okay.
So Public Building's meeting next week, so they'll be meeting mid-August, and there's no reason we can't have that come, you know, a day or, you know, even in that same week.
I'm fine with that.
Right. The only other thing that a few people have come up to me and asked about, gates, is that still a possibility? So I don't know how we put that into the presentation as well. Um, what are, what are you guys' thoughts on that?
As, within the building itself, not behind the building, right?
I'll go first, I, I guess the problem I have with it is, um, we talked about that five years ago, six years ago, we're talking about it, presentation with Derfy Brown, was it, four years ago? Um, it seemed like it's, it, from an economic standpoint, maybe feasibility standpoint, that may, that is an option. Um, I think that should be a part of the Survey Monkey for people to give this feedback on.
That's your point.
And I think, you know, um, from my own personal, uh, opinion of it, I, I initially thought that was a wise thing because of what our, what I call a strategic plan that we've always tried to work towards. I think at this point, that is not the first option that I have based upon the presentation that was given to us, uh, two weeks ago. I, I think, um, the new building at the various sites are the loca-, those are the choices right now that I think are important to push forward, and I think, you know, we can have that discussion with people at some point, but I think, um, I just put it a part of the survey and see what comes back.
Can I, I can ask Trish a question, Jerky Brown, they looked at repurposing Gate School as Town Hall, did they look at, and it was forty or fifty million dollars, did they look at repurposing it for a senior center?
They looked at repurposing the entire building for a cost at about twenty-three million.
Say twenty-five, I think, yeah.
It was putting all town.
It was all three of those, all three of those things, rec.
But it included a smaller senior center, you know, we'd have to.
I would say on the order, about nine thousand, yep, square feet, and our, our footprint now is fourteen thousand.
I think it's a good idea to put it in the survey, and then we can go from there and see what the.
See what the feedback is.
Well, as soon as I get the draft from Linda next week, you know, I'll look at it and, with Al, and then, you know, shop it all to you, so we can make sure we cover every aspect you may want to be interested in at a later point.
Any, uh, questions from the audience, comments? Dr. Price?
Um, Gordon Price, forty-eight Manloch Road, um, just clarification on the intent of the purpose of the July twenty-seventh meetings, they're, they're not specifically for seniors, we really hope that it's gonna appeal to the general public, we really want all ages to come and hear, you know, with, with, what the, what the site study plan discussed, so, um, you know, that's the way we, you know, we hope it will be received.
Yep.
And, um, something else I wanted to ask, I forgot. Oh, I've been asked this many times, there's, there's always the discussion about hearing, and I can't hear, and I know that at a town meeting, there were some hearing-assisted devices that were available, uh, in, in, in the gymnasium there, do you think that would be necessary in the Performing Arts Center, or could be, could be made available, or, I don't know what the acoustics are like in the Performing Arts Center, I haven't been in yet.
I would hope they're pretty good for seven million dollars. Um, we, we can look at that, I'll speak with the ADA coordinator, um, I don't know, the, and Kathy's here, we can, uh, the town clerk's coming in later, so we can ask her, Dr. Price, how she arranged for those. I don't think they'll be necessary, but if we can have them on hand, we'll endeavor to do that.
You know, we can also save seating, you know, maybe up closer for, for seniors.
Yeah.
But you brought up a very, very good point, because this, if this gets done, it's gonna be an override, and everybody's gonna vote for it, so this isn't just a senior's opinion on stuff, it is the whole town's.
Well, and that's what's nice about it being four PM and seven PM, and, um, I would urge you to see if you get, get into the school distribution list to advertise it, so you get out to the parent base, so they're informed about it as well, um, especially during the summer.
Yeah.
Parents check out, so, um, I think that'd be a great way for you to reach that constituency, to check in with, or your superintendent, who I think.
Thank you.
Will help you.
Keith Janson, one forty-eight Central Avenue, um, Mr. Danighy raised the issue where maybe people can't get on a computer, don't know how to get on a, a computer, et cetera, not really knowing exactly what's going to be contained in the Survey Monkey, is the Heritage Day Festival, if a booth table, something was set up where people could complete a survey by hand, um, during the height of the, uh, most congested period for an hour or two, Mike give you some really good feedback.
It's a great idea.
That's a great idea.
Is that something, Gordon, the, see a way we can talk offline, like, to think about? All right, good, thank you.
Yes?
John McLaughlin, one sixty, General Road, I've got a lot of people asking me about the audio situation, but also some people are heavily challenged where they can't get up to a mic, but some people come up with a handkerchief so they can, um, bomb it.
Sure.
Because that was an issue that was part of, as the chairperson pushed the ability to make sure that it's accessible, and all that, that's why.
Sure, so, um, the request was to have a portable mic in the crowd, so I think we can accommodate that, we did that at the Public Safety Building, um, we had the mic in the crowd as well, so, no problem. I saw another hand, yes, sir?
Yes, my name is Bill Blake, sixteen Kingsway, Cituate, um, I was just wondering
I was just wondering if there are any needs for transportation for seniors coming to the evening? Is that, I don't know if there, there's something set up that way or?
One of the items on my list when, when Linda gets back, is to ask whether or not the senior, at least one of the senior vans might be available for transportation. We'll try to get that answered and if it's available, we'll do it.
And I think too, we can reiterate that the entire presentation's at the last selectance meeting and people can see that at home too. So, we can probably publicize that a little better again because it's, it's all, it's all online.
That's true. They can use GATRA, I would imagine.
The GAT, well, the GATRA goes there for four o'clock, for the four o'clock GATRA goes over there, I think, or pretty close to it.
So, maybe we can just coordinate with them to let them know about it, help folks get there. Thank you, Bill. Trish, anything else with that?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
No, thank you. I think everybody's making a great effort to educate as many folks as possible so the right solution can eventually go before the voters. So, that's great. All right, so, next, interviewing for board and committee applicants, so this evening. So, this is a process that we start annually at this time of the year in July, just to give everybody sort of a heads up on how, how it, how it works. We have probably over thirty boards and committees that we appoint to annually. Sometimes there are positions open, sometimes there's one, folks put in requests, first, second, third choice. So, this evening, we do have about eight folks who hopefully are in the audience, who are invited to attend. Everybody has their resumes in this big packet here that Lorraine and Antonetta and Michelle and Marie spent days and hours putting together. Can't thank you enough because it's quite a feat to take care of and keep track of all of our fabulous volunteers. So, with that, everybody, we have in the packets a color-coded chart from Lorraine to help us through here, so we'll go through some of the interviewees. You probably will not get appointed this evening because we will be going through several applicants, so, but we are excited to interview you all. And the first one, Henri Yeh, who has put through his application for, I want to say the Council on Aging. Good evening.
Hi.
How are you this evening?
Fine, thanks.
Great. So, we have your resume, so thank you. But would you like to just, for the audience, also your name, address, and then tell us a little bit about yourself and the type of contribution that you could bring to the Council on Aging, which I think is your first choice.
Right. I, I think I only put down one choice.
Sounds good.
My name's Henri Yeh, I live on sixteen Wood Island Road in Situate. And we moved here in two thousand and five from Acton, Mass. And my background is engineering. I worked in the industry for forty-seven years and I retired about two years ago. Since my retirement, I have been doing some volunteer work. One of the volunteering was with the MCB, Massachusetts Commission for Blind. I helped legally blind person shopping, read mails and visit her, you know, once a week. I also volunteered at the South Shore Elderly Center and specifically focused on management, money management. And that basically is make sure the checkbook is balanced, make sure the person has enough money to pay the bills, make, make sure the bills are paid on time. Make sure there's not unexplainable withdrawals, either cash or ATM. So, we basically report to, to the service council. And, and I'm also the board member and the treasurer for NAMI, that's the National Alliance for Mental Illness, South Shore. And it's all volunteer. So, and the lastly is I'm certified, AARP certified tax aid, so I do tax returns for the seniors and low-income families. And since Situate didn't have a place, and I've been volunteer last two years at Marshville and Hingham. Right? So, but there are Marsh, there are Situate people signing up there, so I do see Situate people. And, you know, after seeing this Hingham Senior Center and Marshville Senior Center, I was pretty impressed with the work they do and with the facility that they provided to the seniors. So, when this announcement came up, and I know Dr. Price, I, I thought that we, you know, I can help. And I don't know what the jobs entails, but I think I have a lot of background that I can bring forward, so.
I, I would agree with you on that, absolutely. Thank you. I think you have a lot of experience, that would be very beneficial to the Council on Aging. I'll defer to the board if there are any questions, Mr. Yeh first.
Sure. What do you think the most important thing about a new senior center is?
I think it's a comfortable facility for them that they want to go there, they want the social. I, I see things at the Marshville, it's, it's always hopping. They serve great lunch and they have, I know Situate offers programs as well, yoga and so on. And, but they, their stuff is all together and multiple events, activities happening on the same day, same time. And, so I think that's important. And the other thing, I don't hear about it, I, I see it once in a while in the, well, once a year in the tax bill, you know, if you want to contribute to help the seniors. I, I think that, you know, financial support, understand what they need, and I think that's important too.
Thanks.
John?
No, no, I'm, I'm fine.
John?
Once a month, John?
Yep.
Well, there's one opening on the Council on Aging and we have three applicants. But you certainly are highly qualified and can't thank you enough for coming forward and submitting your requests.
Five applicants, actually.
We have five? Oh, we only, each night, okay, so three this evening, so, very competitive.
So, if, if I could say something, Mr. Yeh, I'm not sure because we got to interview everybody. And obviously, one of the more difficult tasks that we have is when we have qualified people in a limited number of positions. And it's the same question I'll ask everybody. I hope you, you or anybody else would consider continuing to be involved. This is a very interesting time, a very exciting time for Council on Aging. And so, I just hope that, you know, the other people will do the same because I'm like, obviously I got to interview everybody, but I'm like, there is always a need for refreshing a board because the board becomes stale at some point. And I know we've tried to do that with some boards in the past and, you know, but this, in any event, whatever happens, it's, it's going to be a fun time.
Right.
It's going to be exciting, it's going to be a lot of stress.
Sure.
But it's, it's a good time to be involved. So, I, I hope that you or anybody else who's interested, don't get deterred. Please stay active, that's the most important thing, so.
Well, and I would add that too, with, oh, sorry, I was just going to say, are there any other boards that you would consider as a second choice? Because usually we'll have a notation of that and we don't have anything like that for you.
That's what I said, I didn't put anything down. I'm a member in North South River Watershed.
Oh, you are, okay.
Yeah.
Busy guy.
I count, I count fish. Well, I like the, you know, the duration of the short season, you know, tax aid, four months and, you know, move on to something else. But, yeah, I volunteer different, different things, so.
And just to clarify, that there's, there's one, two, three, four people that expire, so they're not, they have to be re-located as well, so they're not automatically renewed to that position?
Right.
So.
No, I'm, great to see a lot of people who want to get involved, which is great.
Well, so are we.
Yeah, we are too.
Thanks.
So, thank you so much for coming out and for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Price?
Gordon Price, forty-eight Manlock Road. I didn't know Henri was going to be here nor did I know he was applying. I can vouch for his insight, he has excellent insight into what I think the Council on Aging is all about. He would make a great addition to the, to the committee, the board.
Thank you. Dr. Maud Maltese, did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Milstead.
Milstead?
Yeah.
I apologize. Welcome.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind for the record, just your name and address and a little bit about your experience?
Okay, Maud Milstead, seven-five-five First Parish Road. I'm a doctor, but like Dr. Gordon Price, I'm a nurse practitioner with a doctoral degree, so that's the confusion. I'm an active nurse practitioner, been working as a nurse and nurse practitioner mainly with the elderly. I currently work with, for the veterans, so I work with veterans from Second World War, hundred-and-four years old, and Vietnam vets, those are my main patient population. In the course of my studies, I have read extensively and had to study about, you know, active aging, aging in place, geriatrics at this current time, and what also, what is the, you know, the future. So, besides the, you know, the, the education I've had, I've also had a lot of hands-on experience because they're my patients, they're in my office, I'm talking to them, I'm prescribing for them. And I especially think it's important that the whole family is involved and, you know, I'm quite familiar with all the issues such as they have to go to a nursing home, what's going to happen to the house, you know, they lose their driver's license. So, I think the two ways I can help is, I just want to help, you know, whatever way and whatever people are already doing, just want to help out. But I also think I'm quite good at researching information and finding information about the future so we can be in, in touch with what the current trends are, what is the research, so that decisions are made like data-driven, like, you know, evidence-based practice.
I appreciate that. Sometimes that's probably one of the skill sets that nobody wants to take on on these committees.
Well, I actually happen to like to research, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Do any of the board members have questions?
Your background is very impressive.
Sorry, I just.
No, don't apologize.
[laughing].
You're way too qualified for this.
Well, it's not a job, it's a volunteer position.
So, I just asked you the same question in terms of, and just briefly, what do you think the primary need in a new senior center for, for seniors in this town would be?
Well, I think that it's important to offer several programs, but it's also important to be receptive to what the seniors want and need, so, and to look to the future. So, what, in ten years from now, how many people are we going to have that are a certain age and what are they going to need? So, it should be adaptable. I don't mean just the physical building, but the, the people that are running it has to be adaptable to the needs of the seniors, as well as to have a heart for the people. So, you know, it's snowing and we need to go out there and get them. So, that's what I feel.
John?
No, other than, I remember meeting Maud at the town, town meeting.
The marijuana issue, sorry.
Talking about it afterwards, I was like, I didn't recognize you, where have I put it there? I see you have two other options or two other, in the event that you're not nominated, but two other committees or commissions you might be interested in.
Yeah, but I really feel like the Council of Aging fits best with my work experience as well as, you know, what I feel, I feel so strongly that this is a town full of families and children, but what about the generation before and the generation, you know, before that, who raised all these people? And a lot of them are eighty-five and ninety alone and, you know, like, I also feel it's important that they have tax breaks and maybe the, the trash ticker. These type of things are important and they're not feeling alone. So, that's, that's why I, why I choose this.
One thing I, I think, because of the numbers, that same thing that I said to Mr. Yeh is the same that I, I communicate to you, but I'll talk to Linda and I'd like to talk to J.D. I'm not sure of like any potential subcommittees that are maybe, that the Council on Aging has for, for people, whoever we select.
Sure.
The person we're going to select, the people we select, if there's any extra positions maybe on the subs, that, that might be an option, but at least I throw that out there because again, for the same reason, it's a good time to be involved, a lot of things are happening, so.
Thank you.
Keep that in mind, please.
Sure.
I'm very impressed, like as Tony said earlier, have you attended any of their meetings? Do you know what direction they're going in and things like that?
Well, I've read the last report and I was at the meeting, at the town meeting where I heard the thing about these, the senior center. It was actually at the town meeting when I realized that, you know, use a little help and they're doing a great job, but it could, you know, it's a lot is being done for the children, but I feel that the elderly really need. So, I read the whole report, I think it's two thousand and fifteen, that one, on the, you know, the survey.
Oh, the survey.
Yeah, I read that whole thing.
The master U.S. analysis.
Yes, that's it. And then I read the site thing, so.
And you have extensive BHA experience.
Yes, but I'd rather not do that.
That's not what I asked you.
That's my work, you know?
If you want to do long, you want to.
Yes, I'd really rather do something else.
Okay, that's why I was asking.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for waiting.
Thank you.
Nancy Chapman? Is Nancy still here? Nancy's been here for a long time, shouldn't. How are you this evening?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
Great. Just your name and address for the record and then.
Sure, my name is Nancy Chapman, eighty-three Aberdeen Drive.
Excellent. So, Nancy, if you, if you wouldn't mind, we obviously have your great resume here as well, if you could just go through a little bit about yourself for the board and the public.
Sure.
Great.
I've been a longtime Situate resident, on and off, since I was two years old. Love this town and would really love to serve in some capacity. And when I was reviewing the open positions, it seemed as though the COA was probably the best match for me because of the current position that I have. I, I work full-time for a local property management company as a resident services coordinator, working at a, a senior apartment complex, working directly with the residents, linking them to services that they may need, running programs for them, et cetera. And I've been doing this work for about five years, both here and on the West Coast where I recently relocated from. I have a great deal of respect for our seniors. I think it takes a special person to be able to work with them. It's a very special population and I think I have a great understanding of the needs of the seniors in general, whether it's this town or another town or just in general. And I think I have a lot to offer. I have quite a background in public housing and affordable housing, working with families and with seniors, but my, my passion is, is to work with older people.
Great, okay, thank you. John, any questions?
No, no, I don't.
John?
Well, again, I ask, had you considered, not that you're not qualified for this, you are, I just, I always ask if there are other boards, like Affordable Housing Trust, you've got some background there, Council on Disabilities, I was wondering, another area, you seem to have resources and skills that you can be applied to any one of those three, but I, at least throw that out there.
Thank you. I did actually, I did consider both of those. I, I have to say, I don't know a lot about either one of them, but that is a possibility. This, this just seemed to speak to me because of the work that I've been doing for the past five years, working directly with seniors and, you know, it's, it's my passion, but that is a possibility.
Thank you.
Tony?
Yeah, and I'll just ask you the same question about, you know, us building a new senior center. What, what's your, in your experience, the one thing that you think should stand out in the decision-making process?
I see, seniors have a lot of needs, housing, transportation, et cetera, but I don't hear a lot of talk about isolation. And I think particularly for people who live maybe in their own homes, I think, I'd, I'd like to see, I, I think that the Council on Aging does a great job. I think it's, it's a very active agency, but I think maybe targeting maybe more people to just either bring programs to them in some way or to get them out.
Great, thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you, thank you for waiting and thank you for applying. This is never an easy task. Next, Jeff Dugan for the Commission on Disabilities, is Jeff here?
Yes.
Hi, Jeff.
I think you guys have some tough choices.
Thank you.
Jeff, how are you?
I'm good. Although, any of those three that have applied, if they want to go for the Commission on Disabilities, it's definitely.
I couldn't agree more.
We have lots, we have openings, so.
So, oh, sorry, yeah, so, Jeff Dugan, almost gave me my work, three-twenty-six Tilden Road in Situate. I've worked for the Massachusetts Office on Disabilities for close to seventeen years now. For the past ten years, well, our agency is a lead coordinator with. now, for the past ten years, well, our agency is a lead coordinator with other commissions on disabilities throughout the Commonwealth, there are about a hundred and sixty of them, and that falls to one of my duties, is to work with commissions on disabilities, to help them understand what their goals and objectives are, and, and help them build that relationship throughout the community. I have served before on the Situate Commission, I chaired it for, I think, five or six years at one point, about six months ago, or seven months ago, I had to step down, just because some work commitments came up, and just, I couldn't devote the time to it. Work has kind of shifted a little bit, so I can recommit, and I'd be honored to be able to serve again for Situate, as a, as a member of the Commission on Disabilities.
That's great. I know folks are familiar with you, I think you probably left before I came on the board.
Yeah, yes, I did.
So, no conflict of interest with your paying job and being on a local commission?
It would only be if I was chair, and I'd have to get my appointing, sorry, I'd have to get permission from you also, as well as from my director, from our agency, which I did last time when I chaired, I got written approval from my director.
And I think it's three years, right? So, no issues with that commitment?
Nope, no, I will serve for the full three, thank you.
John?
I know Jeff, and he is a tremendous asset, and has been a tremendous asset, and will be a tremendous asset, and I frankly would like to nominate him later in the evening, because he, you do a great job, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
So, I have nothing but great things to say about Jeff.
Thanks, thank you.
Tony?
Same here, you know, you're a leader in the field, and you, you're an asset to the town that we can use in this area, so, thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for stepping up, you do it all day, and you do it, me too.
But, thank you very much.
Jeff, thanks for reapplying.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Have a good night.
You too.
Bill, Bill Blake?
Which ones are they?
So, this is for Cable TV Committee, section eight, sorry. How are you, Bill?
Pretty good, how about yourself?
Good, just for the record.
Yep, Bill Blake, sixteen, Kingsway, in Situate, I've lived in Situate for about fifteen years, I have a twin fifteen-year-olds, takes a lot of time. So, for the record, not for the record, but I have been a member of Situate Recreation for a couple of years, I've kind of backed out of that, just work and play, took different times, and took me away from it. I, my primary responsibility work-wise is I've been a printer, printing services, for about fifteen years as well, and marketing services as well. I am right now, recently been elected as a board director for Friends of Situate Dog Park, I've been on the committee for the Situate St. Patrick's Day Parade for the last two years, on the fundraising side, and I also manage and help out the Situate Food Pantry, help them with their social media and their website, so I've been doing that. But I wanted to throw my hat in the ring, or try to volunteer for the, for the cable television channel, and that's kind of where I'm coming from. The print side of my work experience probably is not going to really relate to the cable television side, but I think on the marketing side, I may be able to really help them out, so that's kind of where I'm looking at.
As for my question, why you chose cable, some more from marketing aspect?
Right, yeah.
John, any questions?
No, I was going to ask you the same, Bill, I was going to say, you know, like, what, what lens, which, what do you, well, let me ask you this, what do you see that the cable commission could do better now, looking at it?
Well, you know, I'm looking at, from the cable side, from what I've seen, I mean, I've been following them for quite some time, you know, with television, television's kind of going away, and there's more on the internet that kind of is taking up more of the television viewership, so, I'm, I look at cable as, how can we expand on what they're doing now? So, I mean, in this town, there are tremendous charitable organizations, there's some amazing people in the town, the schools, and some of the kids, the high school and the grade schools, I just don't think that they're really tapping into those, those areas, and I think from the marketing side, and maybe the fundraising side indirectly, like, would like to kind of push that more towards those groups, and, and, you know, just get more participation from folks in town.
More programming?
Absolutely.
Tony?
Bill, so, you're also the administrator of Situate Monthly?
Uh, yeah, maybe.
Yes, so you are, and I guess my question is, what's the relationship between that and anything you do with cable, and, you know, what's?
Well, I, I mean, I would probably use the platform for Situate Monthly to help drive viewership, that's basically what I was, you know, when you look at Situate Monthly's amount of folks that are on there, you know, there's eight thousand plus people on there, there's, you know, if you take every single person that's on there, and you look at their friends, there's probably a hundred friends per person, that's, you know, eight hundred thousand people that are looking at the page, push that aside, and just say, okay, how can I take the cable television and say, okay, you know, we're on channel line, we're on channel, whatever the channels are, how can I get more people to tune in? So, I can use the vehicle, Situate Monthly, to say, hey, look, you know, this is out there, now, I could probably do that without getting on the board, or, you know, volunteering, but I think that I could push more eyeballs that way.
Right, well, it's, it's content that's going to bring the, as Moore just said.
Absolutely.
And, a lot of the content on your, on your website is great, and some of your content really stinks, so, what is, you know, so, what's the?
Tie-in?
Yeah, or what, is there a conflict, and what, what do we?
I, I don't think there's a conflict, I mean, I, I believe that by packaging content and putting it out there correctly, I guess the spin is to take a look at what's online, and then also what cable television has to offer, and, just, it's based on how you write the content, so, I think I could do a better job at pushing that content across.
I think the issue would be, Bill, you drive cable to your website, anybody were to do that, that's where your conflict begins, and I, I, I think that, that would be the concern that I would have, I don't, but I'm saying, if you were to use town resources to try to, like, if I were to use town resources and say, I'm going to drive business to my business, that's, that's a problem, but, but I think the other way around, if you're saying, go to the cable, you're trying to, I would assume, you're trying, you're doing it for the benefit of the town, which is, is a good thing.
Well, I think his expertise with Situate Monthly would help him to manage posting it on our town Facebook page.
Thank you, I was just going to say that, the town's official communication.
Right, he understands that, that realm and that medium, and that's where he could help facilitate posting content through the town website.
Well, yeah, my point is that we're not going to be, that Situate Cable Television isn't going to be an extension of Situate Monthly.
No, exactly, well, that'd just be a stipulation.
Yeah, and obviously, I'm kind of taking it down a path that could come across as negative, but that's not where I'm headed, I mean, you've done a great job marketing that site, for good or for bad, and that skill set, I think, is what Moore is saying, could help market the cable television in the right direction as well, as long as that's the goal, and not, not the, the opposite.
Well, I mean, you look at, you look at cable television now, the, the viewership on there is, it's not huge, and especially on the social media side, there's lackluster at best, on, on Situate Monthly, the, the viewership, I guess, or the membership is huge, so, it's not like I'm driving, I don't want to drive members from cable to me, that's not what I want to do.
No, no, that's not what I'm suggesting, but.
I think the point is, is that you could help the town's Facebook face, through your marketing skills, to drive people cable-related content on the town's official Facebook page, yeah, which you often is copy and pasted onto Situate Monthly without, sometimes without attribution, but, you know, that, that's, our Facebook page is to post stuff like that, so I think, you know, and those, those marketing skills, for maximizing the cable stuff on our own Facebook page.
Absolutely. Because eventually it blends, right? I mean, it's all media.
Yeah.
As well as Twitter, as well as every other way that we can communicate facts and information to citizens.
Right, right, well, I mean, I have, there's other avenues as well, I mean, I do Situate Spark, which is new, but it's kind of a business page, but again, it's same content, just pushing content out there.
Okay, great, Sean, any other questions? Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Sean, no questions?
About half what you guys said went right over my head, Situate Monthly, all that stuff.
Adrian Gallagher?
What's her name?
What one is she?
So, Adrian is here for the North River Commission, how are you?
I'm well, yourself?
Good, nice to see you.
Same, thank you.
So, give us a little bit of your background, if you wouldn't mind, for the North River Commission.
Okay, so Adrian Gallagher, fifty-four, Colley Road, lifelong resident of Third Cliff, and have volunteered in a variety of, either community and/or professional organizations, and bumped into Joby, and he said that, you know, there's an opening, and we had that conversation, and so I've been to a couple of meetings, have a big passion for the river, have a boat down there, live right on Rivermore Beach, and so, just want to make sure it's protected, the orders followed, make it a win-win for people, not make it adversarial. Sometimes in the neighborhood, you say North River Commission, and people, people cringe, so, I'd like to just, you know, work together, maybe help with communication, what the purpose is, how it works, et cetera.
Excellent, and you have a lot of experience in communication on a lot of the boards that you've served on, so great, anybody have questions for Adrian?
No, you've been to meetings, you know what it's about?
I do.
You've spoken to the chair, so you're.
I have, and Lorraine did a wonderful job of getting it all coordinated for us, so thank you.
She does that, all right, so is there, there's actually, is it just, it would be for the alternate position, correct, Lorraine?
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect, all right, great.
What a background, awesome background, from, everything from coaching to, you know.
Stay busy.
She'd be an asset, I've known her, for a long time.
Thank you, Sean.
There you go, anything else, guys?
Nope.
Gentlemen?
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for waiting and for coming in.
My pleasure, thank you.
We appreciate it. Jennifer Foley?
Hi.
Hi, Jennifer, Jennifer's here for, to apply for the Conservation Commission as her first choice, advisory as second, but unfortunately, we can't appoint to advisory, not unfortunately, but, just that goes through the moderator, said that wrong, so, if you wouldn't mind, Jennifer, just sharing a little bit about yourself, and your name and address for the record as well.
Sure, Jennifer Foley, ninety-nine Glades Road, and I'm a lifelong Situate resident, I grew up there, went to high school here, all of, all of those good memories, I moved back from living in Boston for a decade or so, about a year ago, and really kind of came to the realization that I never really appreciated the resources that we have in our, in our town, even when I, you know, spent so much time outdoors doing sports or sailing or whatnot, and so, in the last year or so, I've just been trying to get out there and, you know, see the trails, see what we had to offer, that I was totally missing for the previous, you know, thirty odd years. So, during my professional career, I spend the entire day staring at a computer, so it's the weekends when I'm getting outdoors and really trying to see what, what we have, and that's kind of why, you know, moving back, definitely want to get involved in, you know, the Conservation Commission, or something in that, in that realm, I included in my letter that, you know, if you see something in my skills that would lend itself to another thing, you know, definitely open to thinking about that.
So, the Conservation Commission is, is one of those that you have to dig in and get to know the Wetlands Protection Act and things like that, it's really purview, great board, they do a lot of work, they work very hard, in walking through the trails, is there anything that you've noticed or seen that you think we should be paying attention to?
Yeah, and it's, maybe not like super related to the conversation you're having with Mr. Blake, but in the last, you know, six months or so, I commute, like, three hours a day to Cambridge, I used my commuting time to build a website about the trails on the South Shore, because I found that there wasn't one, I was spending the weekends, you know, going to different websites to see which trail I wanted to visit, or what event might be happening, and so I've built a website that, you know, pulls them all in together, because people don't know, they don't know that there are trails in the West End, and I still don't even know all the trails that are in Situate, because there isn't a, a good resource for that, so that's kind of one of the biggest things, I think.
I couldn't agree with you more, and I think there, there's some content out there that needs to be pulled together, looking at the current chair of the Conservation Commission over there, it's not, there, there have been several attempts from volunteers through CPC and Conservation to do trail websites, I just don't know where they are, so I know we could certainly use some help bringing all that together.
Frank showed me one last night.
They're out there, but you got to find them, John, do you have any questions?
So, one thing is, I commend you, if there's an ability to coalesce all the trails, as well as working to try to create more, because of all the open space that we have, and getting the public to be able to have an opportunity to use it, and, you know, the way that the trail that Norwell has on Dover Street, where everybody's using it, you know, constantly, cars are parked all over there, but, the one thing is, I know that you said you commute and, and timing, one of the other aspects, not one of the, one of the major aspects is, obviously, knowing the Wetland Protection Act, going to take a look at various sites in town, and the commitment, if I'm not mistaken, Frank, tell me, it's a minimum twice a month, all right, so, because they make, they, they have a lot of applications, and I, I state that because there's a commitment to it, and sometimes people get on, get on, involved, or get on, get on the commission, and they find out it's too much, so I just make sure that, you know, you, you're prepared for it, and, you know, it's, it's a good board, it's a very important board for the town, so.
Yeah, I take the responsibility super seriously, it's a three-year commitment, I'm not married, and I don't have kids, I happen to commute a lot, but I also have a flexible job, where, you know, if I have something that I have to do at ten AM, I can work from home that day, and they understand that, it's one of, one of the benefits of working at a startup.
It is, I don't work for startups.
I was going to say.
But I know that they have benefits like that.
That we wish you had.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so, the only thing that struck me is Conservation, when we think of the trails and stuff, that's all great, but I think Frank could probably attest to, it's, it's a very active board, it's a very tough board, because a lot of the things are really the law in terms of what you can build and what you can't build, so you've got people coming before you with projects, not really where do you want to put a trail, but, I want to build an addition on here, and trying to, I don't know if finagle is the right word, but, you know, try and get what they want, you know, within the boundaries of the law, so, that's a lot of it, as John mentioned, really, understanding what the code is, so that you adhere, you know, adhere to it when people come before you on projects, so, that's.
Just setting proper expectations.
Yeah, absolutely, I think they play together in the sense that, you know, if people don't appreciate what they have, they won't understand why they have to get the approval to do something.
Well, you're dealing with savvy builders that are trying, that know it, probably, I mean, Frank may, may attest, may know it better than, than anybody on the board, so, it's just, it's, it's a great board, it's an active board, it's a very important board, but it takes a lot of work in terms of just knowing, you know, it's a learning process, I, I couldn't sit on it, because I don't know all the codes, or all the stuff that goes with, so, so there's kind of a, a learning curve in terms of understanding everything that goes into it, but the end goal is keeping the town, you know, properly built, so that we have all the conservation land that we should, so.
Yeah, I, throughout my entire professional career, and like, I fully respect your opinion, if you don't think I'm, you know, qualified for it, I've dug into.
No, no, that's not it at all.
Oh, yeah.
We're just trying to set the expectation for you for the time commitment and the level, like, the learning curve, that's all, not that you're no.
Well, I think you'd be great, and I just don't want you to get to the first day and say, well, I thought we were going to look at trails, and you've got, you've got a builder coming before you, spewing off stuff left and right, saying, well, I want to build a, a, a two-hundred square foot addition, not a fifteen-hundred, you know, so that's, that's just part of the job too, because sometimes the name can be a little deceiving, but I'm, by no means do I think you couldn't handle it, or wouldn't enjoy it, just know that you're getting into a learning experience.
Yeah, I really like the opportunity to dig into things I don't necessarily understand, I think it's part of the fun.
Good.
Great.
If you, if these guys haven't scared you off, I'd say.
They're trying really hard.
No, I'll vote for you right now. I'll make a motion.
It's a couple of times I've just sat in for different reasons before Calcom, there's a good board here, and you'd learn, you'd learn quick, and if, if you're interested in it, it'll be fun for you, I think, and, you know, if we can convince Frank to stay on, he'll take you right under his wing, and there's, like Tony said, there's a, there's a lot to it, not one of just trails.
You can't learn from anybody better than Frank.
Yeah, I really just would relish the opportunity to get involved, which is why I put four things down.
They're all great, by the way, they're, you know, all the commissions you volunteered for, if that's your, your, your first choice, by all means, I'd...
I changed my mind, it's the easiest board.
Every six months.
Short meetings.
Oh, you meant conservation.
No, I think you do great.
Sean's right, don't, we just want to make sure that you understand, you know, and it's not a commentary on your ability to dig in or your qualifications at all, just want to make sure that you understand the level of expectations.
And please don't take, I only say it because dealing with regulations, they're very dry to read, and I know, well, one of the toughest things on that board is when somebody comes in and says, "Look, I just want to build here," and we're not talking about building in a river or a tributary, it's usually like the fragmities are being cut down, who cares about it, and sometimes you have to tell them, "No, you can't, because you're too close to the wetlands and we need to protect towns' resources," that's all.
Completely.
But please, and the trails are really important, and you adhere to me, I'm sure it's the board too, so...
Yeah, I, I've experienced a lot of great feedback on trying to build that out, and so it's been fun.
Awesome, thank you for flying.
Thank you.
So, any...
And thank you for waiting.
No problem, I brought a snack.
Thank you for putting up with that side of the board. Just joking. Okay, last but not least, Stephen O'Brien?
Yes.
Hi, Stephen.
Hi.
Sorry, keep you waiting.
No problem. Stephen O'Brien, five, play more tears.
And you are here, you put down your first choice, the Waterways Commission.
You know, I, you know, I'm a lifelong resident of Cituit, and a couple of months ago, I just kind of decided, you know, I give my time to charitable causes in Boston and everything, I went, why am I, why don't I volunteer for something here?
Thank you.
I did put things that looked interesting to me, but I'm going to be honest with you, I've run two successful businesses, I've worked for multinational corporation, I, right now, I run an internet marketing company and social media company, and my expertise is probably like finance, marketing, but as far as the boards I put down, I'd kind of defer to this committee to, you know, I'd, I'd serve anywhere, I just, I just, I just figured, I just kind of wanted to get involved and, and, and serve the town in any way I could, you know.
So, your brief, your brief description of your background...
Very brief, it was.
Right, we have free openings on the Economic Development Committee, which could really utilize somebody with your expertise on it, because we've, a couple of folks have gone off in the past year or so that had similar expertise to what you would bring to the table, so I think you'd be a nice segue into that, I don't know if you've looked into the EDC at all.
I'd like to, whatever you think I'm a best fit for.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Certain nights you available, Steve, versus not?
I'm pretty flexible, I, I own my own company and, and I do have some flexibility there.
Monday through Thursday, okay.
The only thing that conflicts is Little League baseball.
The only other pitch I'll put in there is the Cituit Speech Commission you had listed, I'll tell you, that is another great commission, that does a lot of good things.
Did a lot of work.
They really are, and I have to say, if I weren't on this board, I'd certainly, seriously consider that, because it seems all uphill, all downhill as far as good, and, you know, it's a great committee, so...
Yeah, that did, that seemed very interesting to me, John.
I'm not trying to talk you out of what you want.
No, no, seriously, John, I was, that was one that kind of stood out to me too, so...
Have a big impact, but...
Would you prefer that over EDC?
I'd like to, actually, I'd like to look at them both, and, and if there's a more of a need in, in one or the other, I'd go, I'd kind of defer to the, whatever you thought I'd be, you know, be more helpful at, to put it...
Well, we don't want to talk...
I don't want to talk you out of it, if you want to Waterways, that's fine, but I...
Do you have a boat?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, good, Waterways.
Yeah.
We don't want to talk you out of that.
Yeah.
That's a very popular one, I don't know, are there any openings on it?
There's no one, really.
Yeah, I mean, not that anyone's renewal is, but that's a popular one, CPC's a very popular one as well.
I don't know anything about the one Mara brought up, so...
Yeah, I mean, that's really looking at how, how to advance the town in terms of tax base, in terms of services, in terms of...
Tourism and...
Yeah, tourism, business.
Kind of my wheelhouse, but I, I kind of like the beach, the beach thing.
Some kind of like little break from what you do during your...
What about if you do this, take a look at the other two, as in, I mean...
What's the other one, the beach?
Beach Committee.
We marked that one.
And I was like, and see if, I mean, if you're both interested, I hate to ask you to come back again, I'm not saying you should, but I'm like, you know, just let us know, because I'll tell you right now, it's, there are some committees and assignments here that are really, really good, they're exciting, they're fun to do, and there's some that are tough, you have to make decisions, and when you do, there's always going to be one person who's happy, one person who's not.
I'm used to that.
These are the ones that are like CPC and, you know, beach and everything else, where you're doing great things for the town, people see it, and who's going to complain?
Yeah, I, you know, like I said, I just, I just want to, Phil, it's long overdue, I should, I should have done this years ago and just to try to help, you know.
It's never too late.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
So, do you want to send an email to Lorraine and just tell her?
Sure, sure, I've been in contact with Lorraine, she's been incredibly helpful. I watched your video too, the stuff, that thing was great.
Got a leg up already.
Two or three.
Any other questions for Steve?
No, thank you.
Thank you for waiting, thanks for coming in, a great night. So that's it for new interviews, below on the bottom of your page here, we have a number of renewals, all of them have indicated that they are interested in renewing, there's no quote-unquote like competition at all for these renewals, and we have a page for suggested motions, if the board doesn't have any additional questions for Lorraine with regards to this list. Do you see what?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right, but, well, first of all, what about CPC? If somebody else...
So, these are just...
Let's say Steve wants to go on CPC.
This, this is the list here, Tony, and I don't think there's conflicts, so I think it's safe to do those, I think that's what Mara's saying.
Oh, CPC is on there, I would, I would hold that off, because we have some more interviews for that, so I agree with you with that.
The two people were here tonight, Jennifer Foley and Steve O'Brien, it was their third choice, and there's only one, there's no openings on CPC, and there's one renewal of Gary Meyerson, who is doing a stagger term and just finished one year, so that would be...
So that's why you kept that on your consideration? Because we have...
So, I think anyone that has a slot that somebody else may want to get on, that we should hold off until we, until we think, think about it, not, I think Gary's doing a great job, I'm just saying, any, only the uncontested ones should we...
Yeah, so, and the only one really that is like that is CPC, on this particular list.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hold off on CPC for now, is that what we're saying?
Let's keep going.
I don't have a problem making a motion for Gary, but I can't make motions, so...
The only other one I was going to ask is Jeff Dugan, only because there are a number of openings and...
I'm sorry, what was that?
Jeff Dugan, for CPC, or the Commission on Disabilities, I was hoping to maybe move him tonight, if that's possible.
Do that. Commission on Disabilities, let me just take a look quickly.
There are four openings on the Commission on Disabilities.
There's four openings, and there are four people that are interested in caring on that committee.
I think we should move Jennifer Foley tonight, because I don't want her to get scared off and change her mind.
Well, you do have another, we do have another applicant, Michael Clark, who's coming in on the 25th, to be interviewed for the Conservation Commission.
So we should wait to do that till all the interviews come in?
Okay.
So I'm okay with Jeffrey Dugan making, if anybody, you know, moving that, since we have a number of different openings.
Why don't I do this, how about if I, I'm going to move to appoint Jeffrey Dugan to the Commission on Disabilities for a term of three years or until successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I can go back to the top with the renewal for Dorothy Cook.
Yeah, Adrian Gallagher is the only applicant for North River Commission as well, correct?
Sure, I'll make a motion to move to appoint Adria Gallagher to the North River Commission in alternate position for a term of one year or until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, shall I start with Dorothy Cook?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to move to appoint Dorothy Cook to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee for a term of one year or until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training, training program, which is to be completed in 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'm going to move to appoint Sean McCarthy to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee for a term of one year or until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program, which is to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNally, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to appoint Taylor Billings to the Traffic Rules and Regulations Committee for a term of one year until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training Program, which is to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. I move to appoint Robin Glazer to the Citu Cultural Council for a term of three years or until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training Program, which is to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNally, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I further move to appoint Ed DeSalvio to the Public Buildings Commission for a term of three years or until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training Program, which is to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNally, any further discussion?
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 Any discussion on that, Sean? Is there, is there anybody appointing?
Is there a time, is there a, has he served more? I'm just trying to remember.
Yeah, it's been on, yeah.
Says 18 years, six terms.
He wants to...
I'll tell you what, I'm going to, let's do this, I'm going to withdraw my motion, because there were, was there anybody who's looking?
Someone that put it as a later choice.
All right, so let's do this, let me withdraw that motion till the next meeting?
All right, okay.
And can somebody second that motion?
Second.
All right, there you go.
All in favor to withdraw the motion?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we'll hold off on that one.
Okay, got that, Lorraine?
Yeah.
Okay, next one?
This is for the North River Commission.
North River Commission.
I'll move to appoint Joseph Norton Jr. to the North River Commission for a term of one year until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program, which is to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNally, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was an easy one. Move to appoint Mary Tannaro to the Beautification Committee, Commission for a term of three years or until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Online Training Program, which is to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNally, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll continue. I'll move to appoint Ann Burbine to the South Shore Coalition for a term of one year or until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law on, online training program, which is to be completed with 30 days.
Is that, is that a one-year term?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a one-year.
My wife's South Shore Coalition is a one-year term.
Okay, because it says three in this thing.
It says three in the thing, okay.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
I'll have to check that.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNally, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Shall we hold off there?
And then the last one, Russell Clark?
All right, he's interested again, okay, good.
Is he?
He's interested again, we have no other candidates at this time.
Good.
And Jen says he's an amazing asset to her.
Oh, no, without a doubt, I go, yeah, without a doubt.
Okay, I move to appoint Russell Clark to the Board of Health for a term of three years or until the successor's name and completion of the Conflict of Interest Online, Conflict of Interest Law online training program, and which is to be completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Is that it for tonight?
It is.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Lorraine, great job on these books.
You're great.
Really, you should follow.
You're really great. Did you want to go back to the item at 7:20?
Yes.
Madam Chairman?
We can do that. So, we're going to just go back briefly to a discussion and vote on an outdoor entertainment permit for Reva Restaurant, I see Mr. Tondorf here.
Hey there.
How are you?
Sorry, I'm late.
Okay, if you could just, your name and address, please, for the record?
Mike Tondorf, 121 First Parish Road.
So if you could go, Mike, just a little bit, I know you have an application in here, I think it's for the Heritage Days weekend for three, three nights?
Yes.
Want to go down?
Um, last year, we did Friday night, which was before Heritage Days, and we had a full band, it was a great event, we're looking to keep it open, we haven't, we have something similar happening on Friday night, but we haven't really confirmed anything on Saturday and Sunday, we just kind of wanted to keep it open, so, that's pretty much it.
So what do you have confirmed for Friday night?
Uh, we have a band playing.
What type of band?
Um, seven-piece band.
Aerosmith?
Aerosmith.
I think I remember.
Aerosmith, similar.
Similar.
Yeah, it won't, none of this will kind of conflict with the Heritage Days music, that's not our intent.
I'm just worried about blowing the people out of their condos upstairs, you know, that's...
Yeah, I think that we, we let all the abuddies know, there was no issues last year, it actually went really well, no complaints, we notified everyone, I mean, it's kind of a weekend of music, why not capitalize on it, and, you know?
And, and, there's not a lot in here, so I'm just, where, and where will the band be?
On the Reva patio.
So between the restaurant and?
Correct, facing out to Front Street.
Okay.
That's how we had it last year.
And your hours of entertainment? Twelve PM to eleven PM. That's a long time for a band to play.
Yeah, it is, they'd be tired. We made you multiple...
What would the hours be?
So right now, we have them booked roughly seven-thirty to ten. And, you know, we're cool at stopping around ten. We don't need to push the envelope. We haven't lined anyone up prior to Aldis Collins Band. But, we may, you know, we may have some other local musicians come and play. Again, this is on Friday, not conflicting with the Heritage Days music. I honestly don't see much room for music on Saturday and Sunday on that patio. But it was something my sister and I talked about, and we just kind of wanted to keep it open. I do understand on Sunday, we won't be doing, playing music till ten PM, so, I, that's, by that point, we're all exhausted, and we want to wrap it up, so.
So my challenge with this right now is not enough information for five and eight six, in my personal opinion. I'll let the rest of the board speak, but it's just a little bit too fluid for me.
Okay.
Just to give you like an approval to do whatever you want between twelve and eleven PM.
Understood.
I also, we don't have any feedback or anything with regards to any police feedback from last year. I'd like to get some of that documentation as well from our, from Janie or whoever was down there, with regards to last year too, because usually we have some feedback on that sort of event.
When do we meet again? Two weeks from tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have enough time.
Were you gonna get any, was there any police there last year, or was there any...
No. It was, we don't have police on Saturday or Sunday. Not, you know...
On Friday, I mean.
Right, but we, we haven't, I mean, it's not astronomical. This isn't, it was probably, you know, within capacity. There wasn't one issue. You know, I thought, it kind of went off without a hitch.
The Friday event?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, you know, the reason why, and, you know, I might be wrong by saying this, I think the reason why there wasn't any documentation, because there was no, there was no issues. So.
So who's, is Friday night, is that Aldis Collins Band again?
Yeah, just, just Friday night for now. That's the only band we have booked.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it possible you'd have them the following two nights, or is that something you...
No, 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 no.
Well, you're not gonna play music when there's music on the stage, right?
No, no, no.
So Friday night is not there?
I mean, we could take the weekend off the table, and I'd be fine with it, and just go for Friday night. We just kind of left it open. I mean, I know, you know, there's other restaurants around that do music. It's, it's a music festival, so, that's kind of why we wanted to capitalize on it. And we just left it open, but I understand it's a little too vague for you to approve the whole weekend. But, you know, it's, it's more for Friday night.
Yeah, but Saturday night, the music's ending at seven-thirty, I think she said.
Yes.
That was Saturday night, yeah.
Saturday. So, you know, if you...
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be ideal. We've been a little preoccupied with Heritage Days, so we're kind of trying to play catch-up a little bit. We do have Aldis Collins Band booked on Friday night. That is it. You know, if we get more information, we can certainly, you know, pass it on to Lorraine. But that's the only thing we have, we do have concrete. I do anticipate we will have someone prior to Aldis opening up. But again, that has not been cemented yet, so.
So what would, so what would the time again be for Friday?
I'd say up until, any time from like four to ten PM.
And then if you wanted something Saturday from like seven-thirty to ten?
Yeah.
I think that's reasonable, because the, the shows outside are gonna be done.
Right. Cool. Yeah.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, yeah. Again, it's not to compete with, you know, Heritage Days.
No, I don't think that, I just, you know, thinking about the neighbors, and I don't think there was a problem last year, because I think we would remember if there was an issue, you know, but, you know, you're just...
Most, most of the neighbors were down there having fun.
Good.
Yeah.
That's what you want.
We got some pretty cool pictures from up top on those condos behind, so, we, we had fun.
So Tony, are you comfortable doing Saturday night, what is that, eight-five? From seven-thirty to ten, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, he's a restaurant, that's, Heritage Days is done.
And we, we have a semi, slightly amplified entertainment license out there, which we haven't really put much use to it. So, you know, this is, you know, it's more kind of a, it's not a frequent occurrence, and, you know, we don't have a full entertainment license, so...
Now, I just ask, if you think it's gonna be crowded, really crowded?
Yeah.
That you get some security, that, you know, some...
Oh, we'll have security.
Yeah.
My own, our own personal security, just like we do on Saturdays and Sundays of Heritage Days. Yeah, it would pretty much, what it is for us is we're extending our personal Heritage Days. You know, we'll have, last year, we had seven security guards that my sister and I personally hired.
Yeah.
You know, all tip certified.
So you're saying the times on Friday from four to ten PM, and on Saturday from seven-thirty to ten?
Sure.
Does that work?
Yeah.
You don't think Sunday, Sunday, you're good?
Yeah.
Do you have one normally for Sundays, or do you, Mike?
You have a...
Entertainment license?
Yeah, for...
Yeah, we have it seven days a week. It's just not fully amplified. Yeah, I don't, again, I'm more being practical. Usually seven o'clock or six o'clock on Sunday after Heritage Days, you're done. You, you want that rain to come in, so everyone gets off the patio, so, no, I figured as much.
All right, do you want a motion?
Is there any commentary from the public? Motion?
All right, I'll move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit for a full ban on the, a full ban for Kara Tondorf. I guess, I'm trying to figure out. I don't know if it's...
On page twelve.
Yeah, I've got it, but it doesn't say the name, so that's why, I just want to know the, no, I got the dates. Okay, so we're giving this to, Reva, is it Kara Tondorf, Reva Restaurant? Mike, is that the name?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kara was supposed to be here.
I'll do it. I'll grant an outdoor entertainment license to Reva Restaurant for Friday, August fourth, twenty seventeen, from four o'clock in the afternoon till ten in the evening, and for Saturday, August fifth, twenty seventeen, from seven-thirty PM until ten PM, for, at one sixteen, Front Street, Situate.
Second?
Second by Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Coastal Advisory Commission update. Keith Jansen, thank you for waiting.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
So Keith is before us as a part of the mission for the Coastal Advisory Commission to provide one of the first reports of their progress. We've been together, I think, two years.
Almost two years, yeah, that's correct.
I'll just name an address for the record.
Sure. Keith Jansen, one forty-eight Central Avenue in Hummerock. For the record, like Ms. Foley, I too worked for a startup company, which is probably a good thing, because this was a startup commission. And some of the pains that you experience in anything startup, you sort of have to find your way first, and then take off from there, and that's really where I think we are right now. I'm sure the, the Board of Selectmen know what the Coastal Advisory Commission is, but for those behind me, our charter, the first sentence really captures it well. "To help the town shape its response to the challenges associated with management, managing current and future resources, to minimize the loss of property, protect the public safety, protect public infrastructure, and minimize adverse impacts upon coastal environment." So in other words, we're a coastal town, we have a lot of coastline, and we all know the issues that we experienced, especially during the storms of the last several years. That said, what I really want to focus on is where we've come from to now, and then the future going forward. The methodologies that we have been employing, and as the chairperson mentioned, we kicked off the Coastal Advisory Commission approximately two years ago. We had regular meetings throughout twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, and twenty seventeen, more so of which our meetings were focused in the spring, summer, and fall. A lot of times, when coastal people, especially right along the coast or around, we tried to have reach-out meetings, including one at the South Hummerock Civic Association last year, and we tentatively have one planned for this year as well. We had heavy reliance on the Coastal Advisory Report from Applied Coastal, which I believe Nancy may be touching on here in a little while, for our priorities and recommendations. And also, we have worked very, very closely with other town officials and agencies, including Nancy Durfee, Kevin Cafferty, and Rebecca Haney from CCM. So, it was very, very much a collaborative effort. Our accomplishments primarily is to format what we feel our primary responsibilities are, and they are the education and communication of the challenges in front of us and recommendations going forward. So, education and communication. I'm an economics major, I'm not a oceanographic engineer, however, a lot of people have a passion for our coastal community, and so we've tried to pull together, from an education standpoint, what needs to be done, what should be done, and then communicate to as many people as possible within the town of Situate. I think we've captured quite a bit of attention amongst people and residents of Situate, trying to bring them up to speed on what the issues are, and what some of the projects could be to, to help. Certainly, as I mentioned before, the Applied Coastal Report was very, very helpful in terms of the high, medium, and low priorities, of which I'm not going to go into here in this meeting, for the sake of time, but also, it's been reviewed many, many other times before. The learning so far to date is number one, it takes a village. There's a great need for a larger number of people to get involved with the Coastal Advisory Commission, not only on the commission itself, but those who can bring expertise into the commission, and frankly, the residents of Situate to come and have their opinions and ideas heard, so we can collectively work on some of those issues, issues together. Number two is have consistent communication, including appropriate website communication that we recognize that we need to update on our own. Number three, there's no single tool that will fix every problem. I know handy people like myself like to think that we can fix anything with a crescent wrench, a CanadWD-40, and a roll of duct tape. Exactly. However, there's a lot more other tools in the, in the toolbox that we have to look at, and how we solve some of the issues that are in front of us, because frankly, we're not a hundred percent sure, anybody, of what this could lead to ten to fifteen to twenty years from now. We have to be thinking collectively and creatively for that. And lastly, fourth is, in terms of learnings, has been patience is a virtue. I mentioned before, I'm in a startup company, I run a medical device company, I can make decisions all day long, and we just do it. Certainly, here, it's been very, very different, and very much appreciated, that we have to take a lot of people's input, and it takes time to get through the process, which I now have a much better respect for, that process. So that's where we were. Where do we go from here? Number one, going forward, we need to revisit the Coastal Advisory Commission Charter, and the commission makeup and modify as necessary. And I know the chairwoman has already provided some commentary in the form of what that charter could look like. Number two is look to develop, not definitely do it, but look to develop some groups and/or subcommittees that might be able to add in a larger area. And that's already in our bylaws to be able to do that. And then lastly, develop much more stringent one, two, and three-year SMART goals that outline the steps necessary in order to accomplish what Situate really is going to need in the Back to the subcommittees ever so briefly, two of which I personally think that could use some additional rigor as we scope it out, not necessarily recommend it at this point, but scope it out. A scientific slash research group to invite outside opinion, to try to bring more and more insight as to the needs in front of the town. And then, secondarily, a community outreach and communications subcommittee. Again, the idea of education and communication, trying to branch out our, into our network out in the community, to make sure that we're delivering the message to all of those appropriate. So, as we look back at where we've come, what we've done, in two years, we've learned quite a bit, not only about the town, its needs, and how we operate as a commission, because as I said before, it was very much a startup at the time. But we have done, I think, a, a good job. We can continue to get better at formalizing priorities and continue education and communication. Next, going forward in the future, trying to involve as many Situate residents as possible, whether it be on the commission itself and/or on some of these subcommittees, will be very, very important. And if not even on a subcommittee, people getting involved to have their opinions heard. It's very, very frustrating, I think, for anybody, including yourselves, to hear, well, I heard somebody say, and I heard somebody else say that. Well, please, come to the forum, have an opportunity to hear, to express your comments, your opinions, your concerns, so we can then work collectively to do something about it. And then lastly, to make sure that we're measuring out SMART goals and objectives, that we can report back to the Board of Selectmen on a much more regular basis. And if I could just take the opportunity to go off script here for a second, and agree wholeheartedly with the town administrator, on behalf of the residents of Hummerock, which I am, at one forty-eight Central Avenue, the third of July was absolutely fantastic. We've been there nineteen, eighteen years, and by far the most enjoyable third of July ever, with no safety issues, and we were right there calling the police several times over the last several years, and didn't even have to think about doing it this year, so everybody appreciates it.
Great. Thanks for the feedback.
Do you have any questions, of me?
I was looking at the subcommittee, the possibility of the research group, and then a community outreach, and then the finance. How did, how did you come, the committee come to that determination?
Well, first and foremost, from the scientific committee perspective, many of us come with different backgrounds, myself included, where we don't necessarily have an oceanographic engineering perspective. While we certainly have had, and the town's been wonderful in providing, providing resources to us, whether it be through Applied Coastal or wherever, there's always some differing opinions, that maybe we just challenge the norm, and challenge perhaps some of the suggestions that are out there, and maybe think of ideas creatively that haven't been thought of before. So that's number one. Number two, on the community outreach, going back to the premise of it takes a village, the whole entire village really needs to get behind this, because if we don't, the village could get smaller. I'm using a pun, obviously, but, but it's the truth, and we know it. So, so by being able to reach out to as many people to educate and communicate what this commission is doing and trying to do, can only help. And then lastly, although I didn't mention it, the finance subcommittee, which is, you know, I don't want to say third on the list, but certainly, in the environment we're in right now, no political charge in what I'm about to say, that we know where the budgets are in, in the US, there's going to be less money to do some of the things that are absolutely necessary going forward. So if there are opportunities, and Nancy does an absolutely fantastic job with all the grant writing and things she does, God bless her, she's awesome, I'd say that even if she's not sitting here, but, but she does a fantastic job, but if there's other opportunities, where if, for example, an economic study of one proposal versus another, that wouldn't necessarily involve a grant, but some people with some skillsets, who might be able to dig in a little bit deeper, to maybe ensure quicker acceptance of some sort of funding, that, that may be an opportunity for us. And I hope I answered your question.
No, you did. I, I'm challenged, the challenge that I see, trying to find people to join committees to begin with, and with the subcommittees, these are very valid, and it's a really important issue for the long term, for the town, not just the town, south coast, south shore, and actually Massachusetts as a whole, but it's, it's such a challenge to try to find people. But you're absolutely right, and I, I like the idea, long term, and to try to get people to step up, deal with it.
And part of that is frankly, open recruiting, if you will, and trying to find skillsets that make sense, and having them throw their hat in the ring, and just like some of the other interviewees had here before today.
I think some of the challenges that they face in the past couple of years is because it's a smaller commission, you know, they want to bring in more representation from the coastal community, so, you know, Minnet, Hummerock, Peggydine and whatnot, through that communication, so everybody's equally educated on the issues and the priorities, so then, when we ultimately have to make that decision, everyone should be fairly up to speed.
Represented, yeah.
And represented, yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to strategize how to get like the beach associations and the coastal coalitions, and both from Minnet, north Situate, to Egypt, to Shore Acres and Sand Hills, all the way down to the cliffs, and certainly back to Hummerock.
Yeah, of course, and, and, and I'm sorry, I cut you off, please.
No, getting them involved, that's, that to me is...
So, so we've already begun to do some of that, and certainly not all of the, I'll say, neighborhoods or areas, but I think we've done a better job, and, and to be brutally honest, the first year or so, we were trying to figure out what was our charter. You know, you could read it on paper, but in practical terms and sense, you know, we are where we are, and I think there's a lot of opportunity to go forward, and I'm very proud of what the team has done, and, you know, certainly the opportunity in front of us.
Very thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
To your members.
Tony?
No.
Sean?
Yeah, it seems like anytime is an event, it seems like, and I just, just thought of this now, the meteor is here in Situate, Sand Hills, most of the time. Is that a good thing, or a bad thing? Is that a good thing or a bad thing? As far as getting grant money and, and the attention, you know, and I ask you, I ask Nancy too, I mean, you guys are the experts, and, you know...
Sure. It's funny, when I, when I travel all over the world, and many times, where are you from? Well, you know, I have a house in Situate, and I see you on Weather Channel every winter. Okay, is that a good thing or a bad thing? It certainly draws attention to it, and I think it addresses...
I'm talking about, and, and try to work it as a positive thing and get, and get funding, like Nancy's been so successful so far, and, you know, I, I never attended your meeting, so I don't really know what I'm talking about, but I just, that just kind of popped into my head.
Yeah, we, we frankly haven't focused as much on that. We've let Nancy work her magic as it relates to, you know, grant writing, et cetera, and in, you know, using the town as the, I'll say, government intermediary, if you will, at a state level or at a federal level. But heck, I'm from a sales and marketing background, if it's going to help, go for it.
Just, board members, just in your packet for you to review, not to vote on tonight or anything, just some modifications to the membership to give us some more flexibility. We found that, so just take a look at it, and we can hopefully cover it in the next meeting and vote to amend it a little bit to give them a little bit more flexibility in, in recruiting folks to take part in the committee. All right?
Anything else? Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much.
I know you've been on a long time. Thanks so much. Nancy?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes, hello.
Hello, I'm sorry about the time. Long meeting, so thank you.
It took you a while to get started.
So Nancy and Kevin are here to give us an update on the coastal resiliency plan, the beach re-nourishment projects and easements that they've been working on for, for months. Nancy?
Yes, hi. So Kevin and I are here today to basically view an update on the beach nourishment projects, North Situate, Kevin can cover, it's a DPW project that's been in existence since 2014, and, and then I'll give you the update on the North Hummerock report that was recently completed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Nancy. So as Nancy stated, we originally, I applied for a grant in 2014 for sand nourishment to the North Situate Beach. In the past, the Army Corps had nourished that beach, they did it in 67, and I believe they did it again in 74, 75. I, I didn't, couldn't find the records before the meeting, and it hasn't been done since then. So our original thought was that we could go and get the money for the, for the sand and start dumping sand on the beach and level it off. Then we learned it had to go through the engineering process, so we got a grant for that. We engineered the right sand to put on the beach and the whole process of how it's done. And then we also received another grant for permitting. So that was about $400,000 of state funds that we had that were able to apply to that beach. Now we've completed, we have our permit pretty much readily in hand, or it will be very soon, and what we're going to do is, we're going to go after another grant from the dam and seawall fund through coastal zone management and try to get some funds to nourish, start nourishing that beach. It is a very large project to nourish it completely, as you saw when, when John Ramsey put the application in, or gave the presentation for the selectmen, but we'd like to apply and see what we can get for grants to start doing that work and building that beach up. And it's, as he said, it's a cobble material, it's not all pure sand, so...
Did you have to build a jetty?
There is not a jetty, no.
Wasn't there a talk of doing it in Egypt to make sure that the sand just doesn't keep going down to North Carolina?
No, though the sand will migrate from north to south, and it will be beneficial to the residents on Surfside Drive as well as Musquashka Birm and Man Hill, as far as I know, there is no design of jetty to hold the sand in place that I'm aware of.
Swore we, because that's what they did in Revere.
They, they showed a jetty in Winthrop, they showed the three sisters and they showed the jetties that went out there, but he said that wouldn't be the case, it'd be tied in with the rock there in Musquashka Pond at one point, I believe he said, in the, in the, on Musquashka Pond Birm. And the material is more of, there's, there's a lot more cobble in the material than, than just pure sand, too, to keep it, to try to hold it in place.
Kevin, what's the timing on that?
We'll apply for this grant, and typically if we did receive the grant, we would get notification that we received the grant, and then we'd have to act really quickly on it. We would have to have, typically they've been awarding $3 million grants, something to that effect, or even a grant loan application. We would probably be required to spend half of it by July 1st, so that means we'd have to go in, just like with the seawall projects, we'd have to...
You don't have the application yet, though, right? For this grant, are you saying it's about to come out? Is that what...
It's, it came out and we're working on it, we're working on an application now.
Yeah.
So, so what we would typically have to do is have half of the work done by July 1st, and then the second half by mid-December. So they're very aggressive.
Next year.
It'd be next year, yes.
I just have one, one second question. And in the meantime, as part of that, you know, not just re-nourishing the beach, but repairing any cracks in the walls that may exist there today, how, what are we doing sort of simultaneously to address that piece of it as well?
You do the seawall, but first off, we need to get, get the, the high tide line off of the seawall. Currently, there is no beach material, beach area available at the high tides, and you're really getting only a third use of the recreational beach. First, you got to get it off the seawall in order to do any of the repairs, but I'll let Kevin speak to that.
Explain that. What do you mean by that?
So currently, at high tide, if you go down to North Situate Beach, the, the high tide mark is on the seawall and rising up the side of it. So even if you were to go at low tide, you can see where the wall is beginning to show signs of wear based on the ocean conditions being on top of the concrete too often, too long of a period of time.
You're saying the wall should not, should be back from the high tide mark?
No, we need to put the material down to push the ocean away from the seawall.
You're saying the same thing.
Oh, so, yeah, so I'm saying backwards.
We're not going to move the wall, but you're saying...
Yes, exactly, that's it.
So what we do is, is we evaluate the walls, just typically if there's a problem or an issue, we will go out and we'll work on it. Last year, it was last year or the year before, we went out with a couple pieces of equipment, and we, we worked some of the stonework that was out there, and we added some stone where required to fix it up, and that's typically what we do. If there is a large crack, we will go out and evaluate it. If need be, we will bring in a structural expert and have them take a look at it and see if there's something that, that's, that needs to be done. But, you know, we, we do that typically all up and down the coast, when, especially when residents call and say, I've got a crack in my wall. You know, the walls move, they're old, they crack, and we just look to see if it's a complete structural crack, and we try to evaluate the type of crack it is. Believe it or not, there's different, tons of different types of cracks, and we try to monitor it.
When we talked about this project, it was a 15 million, 20 million dollar project. The sand was going to come all the way up to the top of Minnet Beach, a couple feet below the wall, and we were going to have 300 yards of beach. What are we going to do with $3 million? What's that?
We're going to start it. So what we'd do is, you know, I think at one point they said the value could be $9 million. You know, we will, we'll present, we would go after grants and see what we could do and do it in phases. That was one of the parts that we brought up, it'd be a multi-phase project, probably.
Will we be successful being multi-phase like that?
That's what they said. I mean, you never can tell, because you, you could get a no-name storm that could come in, or a hurricane that could come in and cause all sorts of damage to it, but remember, the sand's sacrificial, and it's designed to take the abuse so that the wall doesn't take the abuse.
So it was engineered as well to be phased in based on the cost as well, and knowing that the grants would come in phases as well, that we would not be able to find grant funding at that amount. So I think we were looking a little bit at 10 million, so if we were able to apply this grant three years consecutively, which we've been, we've been told that we should potentially be successful, because the dam seawall levy funds have just added in soft infrastructure into their caveat, and they would like to be able to use that funds in that way, and we're probably the only community that is shovel-ready and actually ready. We have the plan in place that's required in the grant, as well as we have the, the design and the engineering completed, we are ready, we're set to get this grant.
So is the outcome going to be a 300-yard beach at Minnet?
I, I think it's going to depend a lot on funding. If we, if we continue to get the funding from the state, or from whatever sources, yes, it, it could be. If we don't, it, it stops in those different phases wherever it is. But anything I think we put out there would be a help, because even if that sand went out and some of the sand was washed away, we're rejuvenating the sand that's in our system up and down the coast, because that sand might wind up down Surfside Road, it might wind up back at Musquashka or, or other areas that are desperately in need of sand. And that's kind of the thing, and even, you know, I, I don't mean to sound like this, but I kind of chuckled when they said we could do the project all at once and it would be $15 million worth of sand, because you think we have a lot of truck traffic now coming into town. I mean, there'd be just non-stop trucks coming down the road. I mean, physically, I don't know if it'd be possible to, to move that.
Wouldn't come from a barge, wouldn't be pumping from...
No, you can't pump offshore, you have to take it from an outside source. So right now, there's a couple different outside sources, and this, this depends, because if we did get $3 million, we might get a good deal on the material, where we might be able to get it for a better price. There's a place in Carver that has a lot of material right now that we've heard of that has cranberry bogs, and they've been, they've been generating, they screen all their material, and they've got a lot of different types of material that would meet our requirements, they could make and mix it. So, and you know, it goes out to open bid, you know, we see where the prices fall and how quickly we can turn it all around.
Right. Good job.
So, we're, we're very excited about it.
Yep, yeah, sorry.
What's, what's your timetable, Kevin? Last question.
We'll, we'll apply for the grant. You know, we may hear, the grant's due July 21st. It may take a month or two to get the results, and then, once we know, we got to act really quick, we got to go right out to bid, get it advertised and, and move quick, get the sources down.
The earliest could be this fall, or...
Yeah, I, I'd say the earliest, because with the advertising and everything else, by the time we get it, I mean, I, we'll look at it, and I, I mean, I'd love to get a lot of it done during the winter, but I, I just don't know if that's physically possible.
Yeah, that's the only thing, I hope that they can, you know, when we talk about Lieutenant Toledo calling and asking how she can help, that's a, that's a really tight timeframe, given the winter storms that we get to get this stuff completed, so...
We've had, we've had the same timeframe with the seawalls, that's why it's been going crazy over there for, to get all the work done.
But those are, those are federal requirements, not so much state requirements for some of them, aren't they?
Well, we...
The state has to leave their internal time to report back to the feds, because they're a conduit for a lot of it.
Right, and, and we have a couple other restrictions through fisheries of when we can't put it down, so we can't put it, there's certain sections we can't. So it does, it gets real tricky, and we run the same things with the seawalls, but they're, we're moving very aggressively with them.
So you, I think you received in your packet the, the final report for the North Hummerock roadway improvement and beach nourishment, and kind of, Keith kind of led right into this, because he talked a little bit about the, the applied coastal and coastal assessment that was done, and the priorities that were created from that report kind of bring us right back to how we got to this place. We, in the report, Hummerock, North Hummerock especially, was number two on the list of priorities, and they recommended to elevate the road or do some type of beach or dune nourishment out in front of the homes. So based on that plan, we had applied for the grant at CZM, and we received the grant and hired Applied Coastal to, to work with us. We worked throughout the course of this year, mostly in the spring, and had two public meetings. The extent of the area was Ten Cliff Road to 130 Central Ave that we were looking at as the project area. They did site visits as well, because there is some concerns about the approach from the road to the homes, so we tried to show how that would work as well. The, the final, and the final recommendations is to do dune nourishment, not beach nourishment for this stretch of beach. In order to do a beach nourishment, in order to make it effective, it would have to be very long and include portions of South Hummerock, and we would be looking at quite an extensive amount of funds for that. So they, they determined that the best thing would be to put the dune out in front as well as elevate the road, and those two items should happen simultan, simultaneously because of the fact that we don't want to negatively impact anyone. So we're dealing with ocean overtopping as well as the still water coming in from the riverside flooding the road. So both of those need to be dealt with at the same time, so we don't impact the residents in a negative way. So based on the final recommendations, I did apply another grant for this area, for doing the engineering and the permitting. That's out right now, and we should find out at the end of July as to whether or not we were successful in that. That's a $270,000 grant to do that work.
Just for engineering, Nancy?
For engineering and permitting, for the both. So I always like to, to kind of combine things, try to make things work better in our favor. We're working on the South River dredge project, there would be, I would think, some possibility, looking at the timeframes between the two projects of taking the material from the dredge project and doing this phased approach, put it towards that very first section first. That way, we'd have less material that we'd have to purchase, since we already have to dredge the river anyway, so it's kind of like would be a savings. So there's also a potential opportunity for the North Situate Beach as well, to kind of, you know, kind of looking for other avenues of being able to do this type of work without actually paying for the sand itself, and there's a possibility, slim it might be, but there's a project up in New Hampshire in the Portsmouth Harbor, and we could potentially be a match for that. We're, we have, again, we have our engineer designs and the permits, which puts us in a really good position to get that kind of material. First, we didn't think they would take it this far, but it appears that there has been some interest that it could potentially, but again, it's a very long shot, but that's, that's like within the year or two, so... And then, of course, the easements, as it is, it's a very difficult request from a homeowner, and they are required as part of the public funding that we receive. If we have a public funding, we need a public, public benefit, so I, I think that's probably been the biggest challenge for the North Hummerock section.
And just before I go to you, John, they've worked tirelessly, Nancy, Trish, Kevin, Keith, everybody, in answering questions and really trying to get that easement to a place that's consistent with other easements, as well as sort of allays some of their concerns. John, did you have a...
So I'm curious, I do, just, I understand raising the road, that's on the western side, if you will, of Hummerock, starting in the first section, which is up near Cliff Road, but the dune, you're saying, so, because my impression is that it's pretty level, so obviously if we push the beach out, that's a lot of material. How are you going to create a dune in front of the homes, I guess is what I'm, I'm curious.
So, yes, so they would bring in material like they would for a beach nourishment, but then they would craft it to be like a birm. Musquashka is like that, Musquashka Pond, that's a, that's an actual shingle birm in front of the pond that protects it.
Isn't that like a rock birm, or is that what they're talking about?
That's a rock birm. This would be still a combination of cobble and sand, and it would do naturally, it would sort itself out, so you would find more of the rocks more towards the back, and then the sand would find its way more towards the front.
John, it, it might be a bigger scale of Peggydy Beach had that kind of dune that was built in there with the sand, and the residents tried to plant some grass in it. It might be something a little larger, it'd be larger than that, and there'd be more cobble in it to kind of combine the...
That's the reason why I'm asking, because if it's a sand dune, I can only imagine it's just going to get pushed in the South River. It has to have some kind of larger material.
Right, so, so it's been designed and engineered to withstand the 100-year storm.
It does, okay.
So it would be about 19.5 foot in elevation, it would have a steeper slope to the back and a more gentle or milder slope to the front.
We're starting at the critical point, that neck, which is so slim.
Exactly.
So it makes sense.
Yeah, that point is actually, it's like 6.5 at the roadway, and you can see where it really dips down when you look at the, the cut of the road that they put into the report. It's shocking, shocking how low that is.
It's, it's, it might be safe to say people would go down the steps to the beach and then have to climb almost, not a ladder, but set of stairs to go over the birm to get on the beach?
Yeah, I like, I don't think it's going to be so severe that they are going to find it difficult, and there would be the opportunity to lay out, you know, like roll out a pathway mat that is just seasonal to help themselves, help them get over. I can see that being a possibility.
John, any questions?
No, I think it's great. Did they plant seagrass in, in the birm as well?
There's no mention of having to do any plantings, but it's always a good idea if you live in that, in kind of environment, the, the grass will slow the water down, and if, if anyone has property, and it looks beautiful, too, when you have beach grass around your home, so it's a double benefit.
So you're talking about elevating the road by how much?
So it's a total, in the front, in that low dip, we're probably going to try to bring it up to 10 feet, but mostly it's going to be about nine, which is really only roughly two, two and a half feet in most areas.
Two and a half feet in most areas.
Of what it is now?
Yeah.
So those residents, would they be allowed to build up their driveways?
Well, that's actually one of the things that they broke down in one of the proposals, they actually did each individual house, how much it would be raised up and how much it changed, the, change the scope of what was there for the driveways and everything.
Because I would imagine cars could bottom out if they, if it was just too...
Yeah, so that's why, yeah, we couldn't do that.
They presented four different scenarios of what would have to happen, and what the pitches would be towards the houses that were pretty good. I think there are only three houses where it would actually negatively pitch back to the house out of the, how many houses were there?
Eighty.
Eighty houses, so they, they get into each individual house as part of that engineering plan.
So at the, when it's all said and done, there'd be asphalt on the top of this new road?
Yes.
There'd be asphalt on top of the road, in, in the driveways, it'd be probably whatever gravel or whatever materials are there now, I don't know how that would work with conservation.
Right.
And would, as a part of the project, would that additional material leveling out the driveways be a part of this?
It'd be part of the project, mm-hmm.
All right.
Good.
I just want to commend Nancy and Kevin and the whole team, they've done an enormous amount of work on this, and this is a really difficult concept for everybody to visualize, so, thank you. You wasted a lot of time, and thank you for waiting an hour later.
Just ask, Nancy or Kevin, do you guys, have you heard how it's worked at Sandy Beach and Cohasset? All the material that was pumped in, did it stay there? I mean, they, they raised the level of that beach by a few feet, I think. Do you happen to know if it stayed?
I, I have not heard back from anyone on the Cohasset, have you, Kevin?
All I heard is complaints about the contractors and changes and everything else.
Oh, well, that was, yeah, right, that was a disaster, but the material that did end up on the beach, I think...
And I, I think most of that material was more of a pure sand, it wasn't an engineered sand, it wasn't necessarily, it was all beautiful sand, and I know some of it's moved, but it wasn't, it wasn't an engineered thing, it was just a dredge and pump up there.
Pumped, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. When we first had that meeting, I thought it was a pipe dream that we'd actually have the mine at beach done and it seems like there's responsibility.
See that? It's only been a few, three years.
Not done yet, but as I said, I was surprised at the amount of work that was into it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Kathy, Karen?
How are you? Sorry to keep you waiting.
How are you?
Now, it's been a long night. I'm great, thanks. I'm actually probably going to defer this to Tony because this was one of his requests, but I think just as a quick overview, I think we're all frustrated at the low rate of voter turnout, not only in our town elections, but our town meeting, everything. So, Tony thought it would be a nice idea to have you come in and I'll turn it to you if you want to just sort of tee it up a little bit for Kathy.
Yeah, well, I wanted to talk a little bit about the past election because, you know, Sean probably has some feedback as well, we both ran. And just, just kind of recap them every time we have them and see what we can do better and get your opinion on stuff as well. There are a few things that came to my attention that I wanted to just make sure that we do right so that the next elections come by, we don't. A couple of them were just getting postings on the website. The election wasn't even on the calendar.
The election wasn't on what calendar?
Wasn't on the town calendar.
The town election was not on the town calendar?
Town election was on.
Oh, you know what I do? I put it on as a, what was I going to say? I do an urgent, you know, the red banner and usually I do an e-subscriber and then I do halfway through that period before the election, I hit e-subscriber again. It should be more on the main page, not just on my page. I don't put it in as in a, well, I could do it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, yeah, I'm not criticizing more than just trying to improve.
No, that's a good point.
So, I think we've got to get it on more, more visual on the website, on the front page, on the calendar.
My page, main page, urgent alerts.
Email blasts, I mean, the biggest problem that all of us are talking about is how do we get more participation in the town?
Well, I have written down what we usually do and it's Situate Facebook, Situate Cable TV, my webpage, an e-subscriber and hopefully sometimes the main page, signs on the common.
So, the signs got out a little bit late, I think, and I don't think that there was...
That was, yeah, that was a miscommunication thingy.
So, again, not criticize, just want to make sure for the next one that it gets done right. So, I think we need more signs up, we need to make it more...
What do you mean, more signs? More signs up where?
Well, at least the signs that we have have to get up and we have to get them out earlier so that people know because literally you talk to people Friday night that aren't even voting Saturday morning. So, you know, they just, it has to be in their face to get people to participate.
This is true. The signs on the common, I usually try to get up for town elections as soon as I've had you vote on the hours, the poll hours, because that has to be on the signs as well. The problem with town elections is the timeframe for the finality of the ballot, not so much the warrant, because the warrant only has the positions and the poll hours and the location. So...
I don't think there was a sign at the Rotary.
You're talking about the message board, use the message board.
It's not supposed to be in the Rotary, it's at the Water Department.
I don't think it was there.
And the town...
So, and if we don't have enough signs or if we have other sites that we think we need them in, then we should, we should talk about that and get you more signs.
It's the highway, the Water Department, Town Common and is there one in North Situate in here? I can't remember.
Yeah, I don't...
Transfer stations are good.
Town Hall.
And I don't know, did we use the...
Is there one in Hummer Rock?
Message boards.
Sometimes.
I'll ask Paula, I'll just, I'll see what we can do to get more.
And get the message board out at the transfer station.
Are you talking about the digital DPW? That's not always available. I've tried that a few times, it's not always available.
Guarantee Kevin will make it available for...
So, how many, how many weeks in advance do you know that you need to know for me to reserve it?
A couple of weeks. The only reason you wouldn't be able to do it, you know, if we needed it in the safety setups for like 1/23 or anything.
Right, okay.
We have one, we have two of them now, I'm sure we could work something out with you.
So, when we post the warrant, the warrant goes on the website, it goes in the five post offices, it goes in Town Hall. Candidate signs are allowed to go out 30 days. Now, candidates have to take responsibility too for getting their word out. So, candidate signs are allowed out by state law 30 days prior to election and taken down three days after. Okay, and then as far as voter participation, when people can't be at the polls on Election Day, let me break something down for you. For local elections only, this isn't state or federal elections. Nomination papers are due to the Board of Registars in my office 49 days prior to an election. Two weeks later, 35 days before the election, is when the registrars have to certify those signatures of voters and get them to the town clerk, me. And I'm both, I'm both the registrar and the town clerk. So, two days after that 35-day deadline for those papers to get to the town clerk, two days later is the deadline that candidates have to withdraw from the ballot. So, now you're talking 33 days before an election, I have to get that ballot finality information to the programmer. Programmer gets the ballot program, sends the programmed ballot to the printer, printer has and usually turns it around in a week for the absentees and then the week after for the regular ballots. So, we have normally, if everything goes well, absentee ballots are in my office two and a half to three weeks before the town election. Now, that's a tight window. Soon as I get the ballots, I always say too, ballots should be here, absentee ballots should arrive by such, and then when they come, I say ballots are here. If you cannot make it to the polls on Election Day, blah, 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 blah. So, and absentee balloting is easy. If you know I have ballots and I've put it on the website, I put the signs in Town Hall, you come in, you make application, you tell me, you know, you don't have to tell me why you're not going to be here on Election Day, but you're supposed to, you know, work, travel, sickness, whatever.
Have you seen an increase in those campaigns?
What's that?
Have you seen an increase in absentee?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So...
Have you seen exclusive of the national elections, I'm saying just our regular town elections, that's the important, I'm hoping it works.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have some on this election too, kids going back to college too. We've already had an interest in it.
But how many did we have at the last election? Do you keep track of that percentage?
The town election, that wasn't that many. They're really, I want to say maybe 100.
So, these are the types of things, and again, I'm not going through your process, I want to start having the mindset of how do we get more people to vote? So, you know, how do we promote absentee ballots? What do we have to do to market it? Where do we have to post it? How do we, you know, how can we go about doing this? And let me just finish. The other thing is I think this is an opportunity for you to brainstorm with other clerks in other towns and find out what they're doing because I think...
Exactly what we do. I've brainstormed. They do exactly what I do. They do what's required by law that town clerks have, in-city clerks have to do for a local election, but they also do the websites, they do the cable TV, they do the Facebook pages, they do exactly what we do. And the other thing I was going to suggest, I don't know, the digital signs, that's good, I can book those, robocalls. Why can't, I don't know that much about robocalls and how, if they're costly or why can't you do a robocall? They are?
They're very cheap.
So, why can't you do a reminder robocall two weeks prior to the election?
Well, most candidates do that on their own, so maybe, you know...
See, that's the, that's the fine line I find is hard. I can't campaign, I can't tell people how to run their campaign, that's not what the town clerks are supposed to do.
Right.
They're supposed to stay neutral and not give advice to Joe Smith on how to run a campaign against Jane Smith, you know? So...
Well, can't we as a town do a 911 informational reverse?
I'm thinking like a robo, exactly. Why can't, two weeks prior?
I would not recommend a reverse 911.
Well, whatever, whatever means we use them.
Whatever the robo informational...
You have to buy the phone numbers.
We have the technology. No, we have the technology when we do a...
That's for emergencies though, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, that's my point is...
I don't think you can use that.
Whereas robocalls are for any, anything, right?
Well, I guess what my goal is, is to make us kind of cutting edge and take, find out what we need to do.
I agree.
If everybody's doing the same thing, then we've got to think out of the box and figure out how we can get more people to A, vote and B, participate.
Absolutely, I agree.
So, I don't know if we need to put a committee together or if you talk to the clerk in Westfield, Mass. and maybe they're doing something tricky, I don't know.
Here's, here's the problem, Tony, is the old adage, you can lead a horse to water. It's, so, I, you know, I work those elections, the staff sets them up. It takes months and months for, to prep a state election, nine months. I've got folders ready for 2020 for the presidential, okay? I'm always trying to organize. But the problem is, is nobody wants more voter participation than me and my staff. We sit there at these town elections and it's so frustrating because all this work and money put into, you know, how many ballots I throw away after 30 days, they have to get destroyed. It's, it's just...
So, I think what, you know, it's late and I think what really the objective is for this evening, if I'm not mistaken, just to move things along and not frustrate you, is to, you know, walk away from tonight and maybe just think about, nobody's saying your department doesn't work so hard.
Oh, no, no, I'm not saying you are.
I think we're all collectively saying, and even I'm hearing you say, that we've got a broken system and maybe Situate's doing the same thing as every other clerk in the state. Well, maybe that's not working for anybody anymore. So, how can we be a leader here and determine, okay, there's step one, two, and three that may make a difference and we're just looking for you and maybe your expertise to think of it and come back maybe in a couple of weeks or a month or so to determine how we can try to initiate greater voter participation. We're not going to solve it right now.
We're not. It's going to be something that's a work in progress.
And then just to noteake some of the issues that Tony and Sean experienced in the last one.
So, yeah, the town, the town calendar, that's a good...
Let me just finish for one second.
Sure.
So, the, the other things that we have to look into is, like I say creatively, is there a way for people to be able to vote from home? You know, can they vote on their laptop? I don't know, but there's some sort of way, I know it's not.
No, I, go ahead, so, yeah.
So, this is the type of thinking that we have to think about. Do we have more than one? I don't know what the answer is, but I think we have to get some creative people in a room and start thinking out of the box on how we can get people to vote and how we can get people out there more than we are right now.
It's, it's not how they vote, it's how to get them to the polls or to do absentee balloting.
Of course. I don't care who you vote for.
But as far as, you know, there's no remote voting, obviously, there's no remote voting for town meeting, for town election, that's all state regulated, obviously, we all know that. But I understand exactly what you're saying. It's PR, it's, it's media coverage, it's advertising, it's, you know...
The only other thing I want to comment on about the past election is sticker campaigns and writing campaigns. Many people told me that they're left in the booth so that...
We patrol the booths.
Many people tell me they're left in the booth. So, even though we're patrolling it, we're not...
You can't prevent...
Every 15 minutes, we had people going through all six precincts. You're absolutely right and it's, it's wrong.
Right, so we've got to figure out, again, we've got to think out of the box and figure out how we can do, what can we do differently to eliminate that, that...
You can try and as our staff does and the election workers do, you can try. That's all you can do is try. It's not, it's not foolproof on Election Day as far as stuff happens. We have a really good staff of election workers, we're very thorough and we do, we patrol the booths, the wardens, the deputy wardens, I have people assigned to precincts go through those booths, we've got a sticker campaign, no voting, we have people calling you out if you're on your cellphone, you know, we have the police there. I mean, we are like eagle eyes watching and you are going to have those kids that take the sticker trash from their parents and they play with it and they leave it on the floor, they leave it. It's, it's, it's difficult to keep track. We have 14,600 voters in town and at a federal election is when you get the turnout, obviously. I mean, we had a really good turnout. The turnout for the federal election was not an issue at all. We had great turnout and we don't even have to put the warrant in the newspaper for the federal and state elections. They take care of that at the state level. So, it's, to get the peak interest of the community and to get them involved, how do we do that?
Right.
And that's what I'm asking.
Besides what we're doing now. And so, if you have any ideas other than what we're doing now, obviously, I missed the town calendar, DPW sign, did we do the DPW sign? We did it for town meeting. I'm open to it because I don't want to sit in a quiet election.
So, what I'm asking is for you to reach out to a number of other clerks and see if anybody has another idea.
If they're doing anything different.
I'm asking you to, maybe we get a community of people in town that come down and think about it. I'm asking to have the list of stuff like you already do to make sure the signs are all there and it's on calendars and I'm asking you to think of a way to get the sticker campaigns so that people can't leave stickers in the booths before they leave. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Can you eliminate the stickers?
No, that's state, that's state law. No, that's, everything we do at the elections is predicated by, mandated by state law. There's nothing that's, you know, the sign, everything.
Because Tony's not saying, you know...
I'm not criticizing what you guys want to hear.
No, 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 I understand.
I'm just saying you've got to think differently.
But, you know, keeping up with stickers is like, I can't even find a parallel. Stickers is, it's just, when somebody tells me they're doing the sticker campaign, seriously, you can imagine my eyes rolling in the back of my head because it is, it's a lot of work and it's not work like physical work, I'm talking patrolling, making sure nobody's in the polling area within the 150 feet. I mean, it's a lot. And if you have people that don't know the process of elections and the rules, you know, you're educating them when they're coming in to take out their paperwork. Here's your packet, these are the rules, this is a signage rule, this is the 150-foot rule. So, you're right, we, we do need more media. I think though, you know, when I put something on Situate Facebook and I don't know, is it Dave Giuliani, Giuliano? I'll say, could you put the town election information, here it is on Facebook? Yes, I get a reply, but it's up there once and then more stuff comes in behind it. Can, can they reroute it like?
Yeah.
You can tell them to put it up every hour.
Yeah.
We could hire poll people to walk through the polls and check the booths every two minutes. I mean, there's things that we can do, they're extreme, but we, there's stuff we can think about doing to solve these problems.
Keep in mind, though...
So, let's do this, Kathy, with all due respect, let's just take this as an action item. I think Tony's mapped out quite a few things that are, that will be helpful.
Yeah.
And we'll see what we can come up with some ideas. I think we all collectively agree that's an issue, so we're not going to solve it tonight.
I just want to start the path of doing it.
Absolutely. The other thing people, candidates might want to consider too, this special election that's coming up, Heritage Days is a great platform and I suggest to all the candidates to get out there on Heritage Days.
We're not trying to help people with their campaigns, we're just trying to...
No, I'm just saying, but that helps us get the voter participation at the polls. If they, if they're campaigning, that helps us, they're getting the word out too that there is an election and, you know, that's all part of it.
I agree. John, did you have one thing I wanted to add?
No.
There are a couple of questions in the audience.
Lots been said, I'll let the audience speak.
Okay. Kathy, is it okay if I let the audience ask a couple of questions while you...
Oh, of course, absolutely.
Okay.
I just think Tony's onto something. There's going to be a huge paradigm shift coming up at some point. If you tell people 25 years ago they were going to buy all this stuff online and use and use a credit card online, they would laugh at you. I think, I don't know what the answer is, 'cause I'm not that person or anything, but I think there's gonna be a time when there's gonna be online voting. And I don't know what the voter fraud is, and I can't even talk to any of that, but again, if you will look back twenty-five years and then you look at what we're going through now, and if people could vote from home, I think that would solve a lot of the problem. But I don't know how you solve the fraud problem that goes on.
That part is just a mere conversation, though. That's not up to us.
Yeah, but the state may, he, Tony was saying, be the front ones and, and do something about it. It may come down through the state at some point, and they may say, we're gonna switch this, we're gonna drive this.
Because of what happened in this last presidential election, I will tell you right now, if you open up to online voting, you talk about the possibility of fraud, voter fraud.
Like I said, I don't know what the answer is. I think it's gonna happen.
We're not, when, when there was a comment about, uh, from somebody's campaign for the presidential about voter fraud, it, it, all us clerks got together and we just insulted. Number one, we're not connected. Those, those numbers are not connected anywhere. They're all manual. Yes, we have an adding machine, so to speak, in, in our, in our, um, voting machines. So, you know, you take it personally. When you balance your numbers at the end of an election, you've spent seventeen hours at an election and you're trying to do the numbers at the end, you know, you take it personally, when you've put your heart and soul into an election and organizing it. So, you know, the online voting, maybe someday, you know, maybe, um, emailing your vote in, you know, whatever it is, that could possibly be, they're talking about pole pads at, um, checking people in in town meeting. Now, do I wanna come before capital planning and spend thousands of dollars on a pole pad to check people in instead of using a book? That technology's only gonna, on a, it's only gonna last a few years, and I'm gonna go back to capital planning four, four years later and ask for, for pole pads to check people in again? You know what I mean? Technology gets outdated so fast for something that, for a manual check-in book, you know, so there's, it's just an example, it's just a parallel, you know, technology goes by so fast and it's so costly, so, um, uh, I agree with everything, you know, it, we need to get people to vote and get the word out there. And we can get the word out there, eh, as best as we can and know that we did the best that we can, but like I said, when I started, right here tonight, you cannot, you can lead a horse to water. You know, we make it easy, absentee voting is very easy. I've been to nursing homes, I do voter registration at the high schools. I sent packets to the nursing home every year, since, and this year was a quiet year, I still send the packet, it's the law. Send the packet, let me know if you need help, here's voter registration forms, here's absentee ballot forms for your patients, guess what? None of them sent them back to me this year for the town election. Not one nursing home. And that's disappointing, because it takes me hours to set these packets up and the labels for the envelopes and my little letter, and, you know, it's disappointing.
Great. Okay. Karen?
Karen Campbell, thirty-nine sorts of stuff. Um, I think Tony's absolutely right that we need, um, to put together a PR campaign that can tie to our community, you know, to community value, and, um, to excite people to why it matters, um, and tie it with all the other things that are good about the town. Um, and that's a PR thing, and there's a lot of ways to engage, um, people that, you know, when you cut out, it's not, it doesn't fall under the town's responsibilities, I, I think it'd be a really good idea to put, you know, together a couple of kids, a couple of seniors, something, and they, and meet everybody and say, this is important and here's why.
I think something could be done at the annual town meeting every year as a reminder that it's important that we have the ballot coming up and the election and da-da-da-da-da. You know, an announcement at town meeting would be another way, that's even closer to the town election, you know what I mean? That's like the segue into election season. So, I agree.
Sometimes.
Then you have to get them to town meeting, too.
Well, that's the other thing.
The one, one thing outside the box, and maybe I'll shut it down with this last comment, maybe we should get like the, uh, good humor man going around the neighborhood, instead of handing out, uh, ice cream with the crazy music, just go around like the Blues Brothers and say, "election time, here's the date, don't forget about it." As unusual as it is, people hear it and say, "God, that's unusual," but it could drop people, who knows?
My last line on here was, skywriting was too costly.
Kathy, thank you.
You're very welcome, and I'm open to anything, so if, if, yeah, any other ideas, but yes, the calendar and all that stuff.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
So, Ma, we need to take a five-minute break because the disc for the cable is full and they need to change it out.
Oh, okay, I, I was wondering, okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay, thank you, we're back in session. Um, we are on a discussion of vote and contract engineering for this design services for our town marina project. Ramon and Mr. Cafferty?
So, as part of the town marina project, it's to replace the existing system that we have now with piles and float system. Um, there was an RFP that went out, um, to eleven different consultant engineers, uh, we received responses back from four of them, they were evaluated, and, um, the best qualified and lowest bidder was picked, which was GEI Consultants, and, um, this is for ratification of the contract.
We work with GEI yet?
GEI was born consulting, um, and there has been work with them in the past, and they're doing a similar project in Hawwich.
Hawwich.
Okay, great.
That Stephen spoke to the harbor master there and was very happy with the work that they did.
All right, and this is just part of a, a pilings project that was approved at town meeting, um, we received, um, eighty percent of it is being paid by the Seaport Advisory Council grant.
Seaport Economic.
Economic Advisory Council grant, yep, thank you. Um, so thank you for applying for that. Um, does anyone have any other additional questions for them?
Just, again, I'm thinking, um, from the accessibility, is this involved with the accessible, being able to get people Steve to and fro, or is that another project that you have? I'd like, um, for, um, people who are disabled.
Oh, uh, this, we're looking into that as well as part of this project.
Okay.
And the, um, gentleman from the disabilities, uh, the Sitewatt Disabilities Committee came down and spoke to me because he believes he has, uh, some grant funding that could possibly be used as well.
Oh, I mentioned it because I, we came across, um, I came across it in, in my own practice of some issues, and I said, geez, you know, that's something that we, we need to look at as a town anyway. So, good, I'm glad to hear that, thanks.
Yep, that, that would be quite a challenge, and the only reason I say it, John, is because it's over in Hull, you know, they have the commuter boats leave there, and they, in the last few years, they had a dock system made that must've cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, 'cause we have tides at a ten and twelve feet, so to, to make the per foot, you know, inch per foot make it move, I mean, they have to zigzag back and forth, so it's, um-
But I think there's something else, um, what I was looking at, not like, like you're saying a switchback, no, there's a lift of some sort, that's what I was thinking and trying to figure it out.
I discussed, uh, with some of the engineers when they, uh, a few of them came out to look at the site, uh, the possibility of having some sort of, um, lift that goes down and up along the ramp side.
Gotcha.
So you drive your chair in or stand in it, and it would just kinda glide down, so it, it keeps it out of the water, um, and it's my understanding, um, that they've done those, you know, some of the engineers have done it in the past.
One person, one person to talk to in, in conjunction with this, I think, independent research, I mean, Jeff Dugan, he's with Massachusetts Office of Disabilities, we just appointed him to the, uh, Commission on Disabilities, he's been on at the port before, he, he's a tremendous resource, I just talked to Jeff in particular, more so than probably anybody else on the committee, Jeff knows it, so just FYI.
One of the challenges with, when you do something electrical or, whether it be a, uh, screw-driven or hydraulic, is the weather, the elements there.
Right. Ask him, 'cause he'll, he'll have some really good suggestions, I'd be willing to, or he might say, it's, it's difficult, it doesn't, I don't know, that's what I think would be a good resource, so, just FYI.
Motion?
Sure, move the, um, sure, move the Board of Selectmen award the contract to provide, excuse me, provide engineering permitting and design services for the rehabilitation of the town marina to GEI Consultants, Inc. of Franklin, Mass. for the sum of one hundred two thousand forty-four dollars.
Second?
Second by Mr. McNani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the second one is for the water pipe installation refund. Thanks, Stephen.
Steve.
Sorry to keep you here, it's so late.
No worries.
Drive safely.
I'll see ya. See you. Just hang in, so.
Kevin?
So, this is for the water connection fee refund. Back in two thousand and ten, um, we rewrote our water specifications and we required a ductile line class fifty-two pipe. Um, during that time, prior to that, there was a subdivision that was approved, um, and one of the approvals that they had on that at that time was with a plastic pipe. So, we'll go back a bit, Al came before the board at that time and had worked out a credit that would be due to the contractor of, um, I believe it was six thousand dollars, it was an agreement, um, so that they'd only have to pay a five hundred dollar fee for their tie-in position. So, they finally got around to building it, they built it with the ductile line pipe, they came in and got their fees, the contractor came in and paid the sixty-five hundred dollars in two thousand and fifteen and left. So, now the developer, Leo Costello, who I, I thought was gonna be here also, um, he's the one that brought it up, he just called us up, um, maybe about six or eight weeks ago and said, "Hey, we overpaid, I should've only paid five hundred dollars. I have my agreement with Al and I've got, you know, the information from going with the Board of Selectmen, um, but I paid, um, sixty-five hundred and I should've only paid five hundred dollars." So, um, that's what it was, I approached Nancy on it, Nancy said, because that was a prior year, um, it happened a way back, we would have to present it to the Selectmen and let that decision, you know, let them make that decision.
So can I ask a couple of questions? 'Cause I wasn't aware this was on the agenda and I haven't seen the material. What, and I don't recall, I vividly remember requiring the ductile-
Yes.
Um, so, there was some discussion that there would only be a five hundred dollar charge because of the extra cost of putting in the ductile pipe as opposed to the plastic and because they were the first, um, out of the gate relative to that?
Correct.
And, and the board voted that at a meeting?
And it's, it's listed on that letter in October two thousand and ten. I didn't, I hadn't realized it either until I saw all the backup.
I'm like Tricia, I remember it like it was last week, 'cause I, I know the developers, they were kinda caught in the middle, and then Al came in and, and said, "No, this is", and, and you might've been on then, and-
I actually rewrote the specs in-
And this was, this is a better way to run water lines, but I, just like Tricia, that's where I think my job ended, I don't recall-
Yeah.
-them making a, an, an agreement to, to, to soften the blow, um, which, which, which is, that's, that, I, I think that's a good thing.
It makes sense, 'cause they were the first Guinea pig with the way-
That was the only one-
They got their approvals and then things changed, you know, those, those lots sat for a little while before they built, so.
And this was actually at the time, remember, the, the economy had a little setback and they granted an extension, they were all set to stop.
So what actually happened is the planning board went and approved the subdivision with the plastic piping, after the board had appro, you know, after the policy went in. So then, before any construction happened, we went to the planning board and made them amend their, uh, order-
Right.
-to include forevermore ductile iron, so, that was the piece I was just missing on, but thanks for having it.
I'm okay.
But who's K and E, that's not anybody I know?
K and E was his subcontractor that did it. He was a site worker, a subcontractor that did it.
So we'll make the payment to K and E.
I'm gonna look at Nancy.
Yeah, the refunds to K and E.
K and E.
That was one of the things that we talked about with the Department of Revenue, it actually had to be the person who paid the, who requested the refund, it couldn't be the original developer.
Are they, are they on board with that, so they, so they know that?
K and E was the one who requested the refund, and so they will be the ones who would get this, the six thousand dollars back, it was their check that paid the original sixty-five hundred in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
I have no problems with it. Sure, I move the, uh, to refund six thousand dollars of the sixty-five hundred fee received from K and E Construction for a water connection fee at Sixth Ingrid Lane in August two thousand and fifteen.
Second?
Second by Mr. McNani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain, Lorraine, if that's all right.
Sure.
Okay. What's the second one?
And then the second one?
Yeah, why are we debating? What's that one?
Hi, can I do this?
Yeah.
That's why she's here.
Tony, why are you here?
I actually wrote this up.
Okay.
I was wrong.
I was gonna say, thank you for all the research.
Um, there were actually two lots in Ingrid Lane, so they didn't build them for all these years, they built this first one in two thousand and fifteen. Lo and behold, the day that I wrote this up for you, um, for Cap and with Kevin's assistance, I actually got revenue showing that the second property in this only paid five hundred dollars for their connection fee. So, one of the things that was recommended to us is that you affirm whether or not you still wanted to give this six thousand dollar reduction on the second house, and now they actually had come forward and started to build. So, I need you to affirm whether or not, yes, five hundred dollars for the second lot is still what you as water commissioners wanted to do. If it's not, then we need to collect an additional six thousand dollars from the person who's building that house.
All right, so-
So, the letter that Al wrote says for two residences.
It's, it's a two subdivision, two home subdivision.
Yeah, for two, two homes, so, said it would extend to both, but it doesn't hurt to reaffirm.
Can I see the letter?
Sure.
Was there originally a three-lot subdivision?
It might've been, but they, they currently gave it to two.
He had problems building the, uh-
Didn't he have to loop it too or something?
We required it looped and we also required the ductile line pipe.
That's what I thought.
If it all occurred back in two thousand and ten, it wouldn't be a issue.
But it's been so long, yeah.
Like Kevin said, I think it was a quiet time in the economy and those lots.
Then mine, I, mine died, but you show me. I just, I just got it.
No, I have no issues. And, and I vaguely remember, they came in, they had it, they were upset, we said, "No, we wanted the ductile, period," and I guess that's when we were saying, "Okay," as an offset, because they pre-conatedated in the gap-
Yep, they were caught in the middle.
We said, "We'll give you the relief," and that made sense, and it was for two. So if a third one gets built, they paid the sixty-five hundred, is, that's how I see it, so, I have no issues with that.
Motion?
I have to find it. See, these motions, you have to read them specifically, otherwise they're ineffective.
Sure, move to affirm the two thousand and ten partial abatement on one other lot in the Ingrid Lane subdivision resulting in a water connection fee of five hundred dollars.
Do we need to-
I would say pursuant to the agreement of October, I forgot the date, October two thousand and fifteen.
Pursuant?
Ten.
What he said, ten.
Two thousand and ten. Is it two thousand and ten when they had it?
Yeah, imagine that. Wow. Didn't I say that?
That's why it is, all right.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danighy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining, and Mr. Harris abstaining. Kevin, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy, thank you for all that research that the two of you did on that. Thank you. Um, so just moving on to new business, um, update on Sister City Souci En Brie charge. Who's this, is that, uh, you, Tricia, or is that John?
Oh, I didn't even know anything about this.
So, we may wanna just do this informationally and then, um, do it on the twenty-fifth, so, um, Lorraine and Michelle and I have been working with Pat Jakard to have this town Souci En Brie committee, uh, parallel more appropriately with the private nonprofit five oh one three C. So we, we redid the original charge for the Souci En Brie committee to update it and to also incorporate joint dual, you know, crossover membership of some members for the five oh one three C.
Makes sense.
Also as part of the towns. Is that pretty accurate, Lorraine?
Yeah.
Um, and so Lorraine worked, pulled together the various charges that were out there and together we sort of did a hybrid. Not a lot of changes, just so it's more reflective of actually the Cork County one that we did last year.
Okay, so we'll just, uh, read this and, um, vote on it at the next meeting?
Yep.
Great, okay. Thank you, thank you for doing that. Um, and then we have a number of one-day liquor licenses. Great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Um, and then we have a number of one-day liquor licenses. Do I have any motions for these?
My computer died, but I'll read it if you, uh-
All right, let me get to him. Where is it? His. Hang on. All right. I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license, um, license two. Reva Restaurants for an anniversary party to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at one nineteen Edward Foster Road on Friday, July twenty-first, twenty-seventeen, from five P.M. to nine P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNatty. All in favor?
Aye. I further move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license two Reva Restaurant for a baptism to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at one nineteen Edward Foster Road on Sunday, July thirtieth, from one P.M. till five P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye. I further move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license two Ellen McKenzie for a baby shower to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at one nineteen Edward Foster Road on Sunday, July sixteenth, twenty-seventeen, from one P.M. to five P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNatty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I further move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license two the hospitable hostess for a graduation party to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at one nineteen Edward Foster Road on Saturday, August fifth, twenty-seventeen, from six P.M. to one, uh, to ten P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye. I further move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license two the hospitable hostess for a birthday party to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at one nineteen Edward Foster Road on Saturday, August twelfth, twenty-seventeen, from two P.M. to six P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNatty. All in favor?
Aye. I move the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license two Lavishly Done for an employment dinner to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at one nineteen Edward Foster Road on Wednesday, July twelfth, from four P.M. to ten P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, I move to approve that the Board of Selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license two Ellen McKenzie for a bridal shower to be held at the Situate Maritime Center located at one nineteen Edward Foster Road on Sunday, July twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, from one P.M. to five P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNatty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Um, we already did the board committee and appointments. We took care of all that, so we're good with that. So just moving on to other business, there's correspondence in our package, John, from Sister Pointe.
So why don't we, why don't we do this since it's five of eleven? How about if we take this correspondence, I'll be more than happy to read it at our next meeting. Um, because it's awfully late, and I just think, you know, it might be better suited at that time.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Uh, then we just need to move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from June twentieth.
I move the Board of, uh, that, we move to accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting held on June twentieth, twenty-seventeen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else before adjournment? I know it's late.
Um, I just want to make one comment that we, uh, Fourth of July weekend, the, um, there were some issues with the porta potties that we had at the different beaches, and that wasn't at the fault of the town. The town had taken preemptive measures to get them to have extra duty on that stuff.
Nice.
That was funny.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, but the company that did it kind of dropped the ball and, uh, and didn't do it. But we have changed the schedule, and it'll be cleaned every weekend, every day for the rest of the summer. And, um, again, we're aware of that problem and have dealt with it.
Tony, how are the trash barrels? The reason I ask is, the reason I ask is I think, um, you know, we did a pretty neat thing by getting that little trash truck. You see it all over town. It makes, it's easier for the guys to empty the barrels. It's more efficient. So I just don't really grow the beach.
I think they put, I think they put more out at each beach, so I haven't noticed it.
Anything?
No.
I just want to welcome the French students that are here from Souci En Brie. Uh, so we welcome them today to our town, here for two weeks. So, um, welcome.
Bonjour.
Good.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
And to sign documents. Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.